As Ray's caregiver, Frances not only provides company and support, but also helps with practical matters such as the oxygen supply. The hospice team is composed of nurses, social workers, nurses aides, volunteers, and many more who dedicate their lives and careers to this special calling. Each week, the team meets to problem solve and work out individual plans for each patient.
Oxygen dependent, she also uses uputeral four or five times a day.
At these meetings, each patient's case is discussed in detail. Plans are made for various aspects of care, including physical, emotional, and spiritual support, ordering of any equipment that might be needed, arrangements for therapy, visits by volunteers or other caregivers, and medication management. Helping patients and families accept the reality that faces them is a key role of the hospice team.
You know, watching that, I was just thinking, of course you guys, when you get back to the hospital, are busy talking about the cases in that aspect. But on the front lines, having help with, what kind of meals can I prepare? Why isn't Doris taking enough water? Those were things, it was so helpful to have you there, Maria, to tell us that, look, try this.
And that's the whole purpose of us being there, is to provide the education so that as things happen, it might not be so scary, you know, a little bit about what to expect.
Well, it is scary. I know, I was talking to Dr. Butler once, it only has to happen to you one time when you're not there, when there's a fall, for example. And just having someone, a professional, say, you know, maybe these runners that are on the floor, they just, maybe it's time for them to go. But there are a lot of practical things, whether it's a grabber to get something out of the pantry, or the grab rails in the bathroom, who thinks about that stuff?
You don't.
No.
You really don't.
And the other thing was, how many practical, mechanical things there are to help you? The special toilet seats.
Yes.
Because I had an inventory of those.
Baby monitors, sometimes we recommend.
Right.
Just for observation, other, yeah, we always come up, bed guards, bed alarms. There's always things that we can kind of do to make the home safer.
Yeah, and you know, even though, at least my wife is a nurse, and, but we needed help because this was such an awkward illness and so badly placed, that we needed help in actually creating bandages for Doris.
And your family, you guys did a wonderful job.
Oh, thanks, wow.
I mean, it was, it was a tough case.
Yeah, it really was. But Doris, bless her heart, she, she toughed it out and got through it, and was exactly where she wanted to be.
Yes, she was.
Yeah.
In her own bed.
That's right. Now, it's time for a short break. When we come back, we will continue our discussion of hospice care with these good folks from the Torrance Memorial Medical Center Hospice Program. We'll be right back.
The Los Angeles Department of Water and Power wants to give you up to seven free shade trees, just for completing a workshop, either online or in your neighborhood. The Trees for a Green L.A. program offers LADWP residents over 40 different varieties of free shade trees. Trees benefit the environment, save energy, and add beauty. Get your trees by participating in an online workshop by logging on to ladwp.com/trees or call 1-800-GREEN-L-A.
As kids, it's really important that we learn the proper way to cross a street. First, you have to stop at the curve, then look both ways to make sure there are no cars. If you see one, wait for it to pass, and when it's clear, you can cross. As kids, sometimes you have to set an example. Look both ways before you cross, cars can't see you.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic today, hospice care. And as I said at the beginning of the program, this is a very personal story for me, as my family and I recently experienced the full measure of what hospice care really means. Through the efforts of our guests from the Torrance Memorial Medical Center, who were so helpful at the hospice program, and again, I say thank you, let's talk about hospice care in the future. This is going to grow, isn't it?
Absolutely, it's going to grow. With the aging population, I think, as people become more familiar and more comfortable with hospice care, I absolutely think that we will see much more of it in the future.
Well, there's always this sort of ostrich mentality, you put your head in the sand, and yet we all come to the end of life. And to understand that there are people who have dedicated their professional lives to dealing with these things, as you have, Maria.
It's another step in our journey. And what I've found, almost universally, is that people do not like to talk about death.
Absolutely.
You know, their own or anybody else's, that just doesn't happen to us, you know?
Yeah.
We're not, we're not going to do that.
Which is a big misconception. I mean, you can have an accident at any time.
Sure.
It's so important to discuss advanced directives when you're young. Don't wait until you're sick. Those are things that you should be talking about with your family members, so that they know what it is that you want when that time comes, whenever that may be.
Exactly.
And so they can respect their wishes.
And to have a packet, you brought a packet for us to actually look at, you know, well, what are your orders here?
Absolutely.
Do you have do not resuscitate orders? What are we going to do if there's a crisis? And it was, and it was accessible, you know? I know there were times when the subject was so difficult, I would rely on that and say, here, you look at this, tell me what you think is the next step. But you bring other tools to the equation. Most people would have no idea that there are different kinds of therapies that can be employed to make a person more comfortable.
The occupational therapist can be very helpful, and our occupational therapist also does a life review, and can facilitate doing a scrapbook, or making a video memorial, or she does things like that.
You know, that's a good thing, because there are many tasks left undone at the end of life, you know, a graduation that you won't be able to attend, and yet, a video greeting is wonderful. I like those things.
Good services, really, it's a, it's very much a team, a team sport.
Well, I mean.
A team effort.
It is, it is.
And it, there are social workers, nurses, volunteers, aides.
Yeah, the physical therapists.
And when we do have our weekly meetings, we're all there, and we get everybody's input, the spiritual services, we have a chaplain that's at all of our meetings as well.
And that can be critically important.
Absolutely.
Because there's so much fear involved. And when I mentioned when we first saw each other earlier today, I said that J.C. and I had talked about how we wish we had started the hospice program earlier, because it really did relieve that burden, and rather than having two months of the service, I would have loved to have had four. I know my nights would have been much more comfortable and that. Now, what about, what about those patients that really need sort of around the clock caregiving services, but there's no one in their family? Is that, are there enough aides and volunteers to help cover those moments of isolation?
We can cover periods of time, that is probably the one thing we don't supply as a 24-hour caretaker, but we do have volunteers that will go out and spend hours, not as a caretaker, but they're good eyes and ears to have in the home. The nurses generally, they have a caseload, so you have your patients that you sort of manage with my supervision, and the nurses will go out two to three times a week, depending on what the needs are, and actually, when things get critical, we'll go out and do daily visits. We have patients that I, in fact, just last week, we had a patient that was having a lot of difficulty with pain management in the home, so we did bring him into the hospital to get his pain under control. It allowed some time for his wife to get a little bit of a break, it's been rough for her, but it worked out completely successfully. He went home feeling much more comfortable, and now we have him on a regimen that's working much better for him in the home, so.
Well, it's always so difficult to balance mental awareness and yet the need to combat pain, because I, we all hate to see people we care about suffer, but boy, you don't want to actually like knock them out either.
Right, you want to have, you want to be spending time with them.
Well, exactly.
Having those conversations and having good quality, and that's, being sedated is not the answer to that either, so you have to find that nice balance.
And the other part I liked is the number on the portfolio that was left with us, it's there, and just knowing that here's the number that you can call.
Which is a 24-hour number.
Exactly.
Yeah, absolutely, you get through to the nurse, the nurses can reach me 24/7 as well. If we need to, we'll mobilize out to the home in the middle of the night, absolutely.
Let's take another look at the video from the Torrance Memorial Medical Center Hospice Program, this time featuring home health aides and volunteers that assist in the program.
As part of the care plan, hospice can arrange for home health aides who can relieve the primary caregiver by helping with bathing and meal preparation. Another key member of the hospice team is the volunteer.
We have a lot of people that do on the hospice team. We have bath aides and nurses and social workers and stuff. The volunteers are really there to be. They're with the patient and the family. They're simply there to be there, to be with them. As I said, listening to their story, reminiscing about their life, listening to the music of their time, reading poetry to them, you know, and the volunteers come with open arms. They come not with a job, not with a task, just to be there, just to be there for that family and that patient.
Now, the role of volunteers and aides, how wonderful that people, I mean, they're truly angelic in spirit to face this, because they know what they're walking into.
And so many of our volunteers have experienced the loss, that's sometimes how they come into the program.
And you can understand that motivation, I know, there are so many times I look back and I think, I just missed by, by a little of knowing either when to say the right thing or do the right thing, and I think with someone I wasn't so close to, I would be better at it, you know, and that's a good motivation. Now, how do volunteers, if they feel a calling to do this, and it is a calling, I think, how do they get in contact with you? How do they get in contact with Torrance Memorial Hospice Program?
They can just call us, and certainly, we would put them in touch with Ellen, our volunteer coordinator. We currently have 72 volunteers, which is great. They provide not only conversational visits and just spending time with patients, but they'll do hair cutting.
Right, and there's the number and the website on your screen, folks. I always tell our viewers to please have a piece of paper and pencil with you, I'm sorry, now you were saying.
Yeah, please call us, we would love any volunteers, assistance, anything.
And volunteering can be most anything, driving, or.
Or if you're a patient, and you, or a family member, and you are interested in hospice services, please call us. We do get a lot of referrals, just sort of self-referrals, probably more so than we do physician referrals, so again, we want to get people in our program early.
Well, and it's not like the program ends when the patient passes. I know, I appreciate those follow-up calls that come in once a month. How are you doing, Paul? How's your wife doing? How's the family?
Absolutely, the bereavement program.
Because that's important. Now, unfortunately, our time is up for today's edition of Aging in L.A. Thanks so much to our guests from the Torrance Memorial Medical Center Hospice Program, who is such a comfort to my family. Thank you to Dr. Lisa Humphries and Maria Sowers, RN, for joining us. And now, it's time for our feature on Aging in L.A., Senior Stat Shots, where we look at statistics that pertain to senior citizens. We found today's statistics in the recently released L.A. County Seniors Count, a survey of the older adult population in Los Angeles City and County. We have featured this survey on our program. We find that some seniors encounter various amounts of difficulty in performing the following daily tasks. For example, 70% of seniors have no difficulty in getting in and out of bed, but 19% have a minor difficulty, 5% have serious difficulty, and about 2% are unable to do so. When it comes to preparing meals, 68% have no difficulty, 15% have a minor difficulty, 6% a serious difficulty, and 6% are unable to do so. Now, as far as eating meals is concerned, 82% report they do not find it difficult, 10% have a minor difficulty, 2% a serious difficulty, and 1% of seniors in L.A. County are unable to eat on their own. What about using the telephone? 79% do not find it difficult at all, 11% have a minor difficulty, 3% a serious difficulty, and 2% are unable to use a phone. In our next program, we will look at statistics that show who gives seniors assistance in these daily tasks if they need it, and that's today's Senior Stat Shot. Now, you can get your own copy of this fact-filled survey by simply going online to www.ladcs.org, which is Los Angeles County Community and Senior Services, and you just click on L.A. County Seniors Count, and the full report will appear. Or you can have a copy sent to you by calling Area 213-738-2065. That's area code 213-738-2065. I'm Paul Peterson, for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thanks so much for watching, see you next time. Lisa, thank you so much.
L.A. City View, Channel 35, your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to City Council Meeting for Tuesday, September 28th, 2010. We're here in the John F. R. Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Thank you to the members of the council who are here on time. Council rules state that council members should be here at the top of the hour at 10 o'clock in their seats, ready to proceed. Unfortunately, we do not have a full quorum right now. Council members Hahn, Krikorian, Labange, and Rosendahl are here. Mr. Reyes is out today, but besides that, we are expecting everybody else. So the following council members are now late, council members Alarcon, Cardenas, Uizar, Corretz, Parks, Perry, Smith, Wesson, and Zine. Please make your way to council chambers immediately. If we fail to reach a quorum shortly, we will be unable to have a meeting. In the meantime, thank you to members of public who have taken time out of their day to be here, to come here to listen and to testify. We thank you for your presence. If you can't come in person, there are four other ways to follow your city council. One is in two of our remote locations, Savannah City Hall and in San Pedro City Hall, where we have set up video conferencing capabilities to be able to take your testimony from those places, as well as for you to be able to follow the council meetings. Secondly, we're available throughout the city's cable system on Channel 35, L.A. City View, your channel, which is run by our information technology agency, and broadcasts each of these meetings live, as well as rebroadcasting them in the evening time. Next, you can go onto the internet, if you're not close to a television, and go to our city's homepage at www.lacity.org, and there we have links on the left-hand of the page to be able to catch live streaming webcasts of our council meetings. For your convenience, we also archive all of our past council meetings there, so any items that we have considered in the past, or that might be coming back to us, you can find there in the archives. Also, through the city's homepage, are links to city services, city departments, and all of the supporting materials that council members read, as well as our agendas. Agendas are also made available to the public in our public buildings and through the city clerk's office, as well as here in council chambers. 72 hours in advance for our meetings, and 24 hours in advance for any special meeting items. And finally, if you're not close to a computer or a television, you can use your telephone and call into council phone, service also run by the I.T.A., and that number is 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY, if you are in the 213 area code. We also have that available at 818 at 904-9450, in the 310 West Side area at 310-471-CITY, and then San Pedro at 310-547-CITY. Thank you again to council members Hahn, Krikorian, Labange, Perry, and Rosendahl. We're at six members, still awaiting Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Uizar, and Mr. Corretz, Mr. Parks, Mr. Smith, Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Zine. Again, it is almost 10:10 now. Sergeant Adams can please assist us in finding out where the whereabouts of those council members are. If they're not here in the next five minutes, we will unfortunately adjourn for a lack of a quorum, so please, if deputies can assist us with their council members as well. Thank you. This is our final quorum call for council members Alarcon, Uizar, Corretz, Smith, and Zine. Council members Alarcon, Uizar, Corretz, Smith, and Zine, we have three minutes before we cancel the meeting. Thank you. Colleagues, it is 10:15 right now. I've been informed that Councilmember Alarcon is in the building and coming into council chambers. Otherwise, I would cancel for lack of a quorum. While we are waiting, let me underscore again one more time how important it is for council members to be here on time promptly. Members of the public take time to be here out of their workdays, and for council members to be late, and we have four, five council members who are still late, is just simply unacceptable. And we need to be sure to be here. 10:15 is usually the cutoff. We'll wait another 30 seconds for Mr. Alarcon. If we don't get him, we will cancel. I've been informed he's on his way down to chambers. Please call the roll. Alarcon, Cardenas, Hahn, Uizar, Corretts, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President. First order of business, if I can ask folks to please take their seats and to wind their conversations down? First order of business, please. Approval of the minutes. All right, Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Smith seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business? Commendatory resolutions for approval? Krikorian moves, Mr. Labange seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. All right, time for the salute to the flag. If I can ask everybody to please rise in council chambers. And Mr. Labange, if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
All rise, place your hand over your heart, ready to begin. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we can please run through today's agenda first, and then we'll come back for public comments. Colleagues, if you please direct your attention to today's agenda for any items you wish to call special. First items? Items 1 through 3 are ordained and scheduled for public hearing. Okay, and do we have cards on this? We have cards on all three, sir. Okay, and we'll call one special for Mr. Smith as well. Next items, please. Items 4 through 17 are items for which public hearings have been held. Okay, I'll call five special. Other specials, colleagues? 4 through 17. 4 through 17 once. 4 through 17 twice. Mr. President, I've been made aware that an amendment to item 14, 14A, will be circulated shortly. Okay. City clerk, I will call that special for our city clerk. And if there's no other specials, please open the roll on the balance. Oh, sorry, 6 for Ms. Hahn.
And 9.
And 9.
And 13.
Geez. I'm sorry, that's all you can call special today, Ms. Hahn?
6, 9, 13, 36, oh, I don't want to hear it.
Mr. Parks?
Just forthwith when you finish.
Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? Now, let's take up the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved.
We're forthwith on 6 and 10.
6 was called special by Ms. Hahn, but on number 10, we'll send that forthwith. Next items, please. Items 18 through 33 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Any objection to considering those? If not, do we have any cards on the public on any of these? We do. That would be items 18, 25, and 33. Okay, we'll close the other public hearings. Mr. Zine calls 20 special. Mr. Uizar?
28, have an amended motion, please.
Okay, Mr. Uizar, 28. Any other specials? If not, let's go ahead and take up the balance. Please prepare the roll. Excuse me, pardon the interruption. Councilmember on item 19B, the Housing Department reports that this matter should be received and filed, 19B. Okay, we'll take that recommendation for the Arts and Parks piece. Please, on the balance, prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
32 special, I mean 32 forthwith.
You got it. 32 forthwith and 27 forthwith as well, if there's no objection. Supplemental agenda, please. On the supplemental agenda, item 34 is an item for which a public hearing has been held. Okay, number 34, there's no special on that. Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next items? Items 35 through 37 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. If there's no objection, consideration, those are before us. Do we have any cards on these three items? We do have, received a card on item number 35. Okay, we'll close the public hearings for 36 and 37. Anybody? 36 for Ms. Hahn. And if nobody wishes, call 37 special. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on 37 and tabulate the vote.
Mr. President, can we do 37 A and B forthwith, please?
A and B forthwith without objection on 37. Thank you, Mr. Uizar. I'll take us to our general public comment. This is for items that are not on today's agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city. We have two minutes per speaker, and the podium is here for you. Thank you to everybody who has filled out cards. Dr. Clyde Williams is our first speaker. He'll be followed by Arnold Sacks.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrow Road, El Sereno, Northeast L.A. Last night, we had a pretty good meeting in Eagle Rock. We wish many more people would have come. We wish that there would be many more such meetings of the Rules and Election and Energy and, sorry, Environment and Energy Committees. So the basic element, though, is can we trust government departments? There's concerns regarding the Department of Building and Safety, concerns, of course, for the Department of Water and Power, and eventually, you'll be concerned about the Department of Public Works. Yesterday, they gave a short presentation of only 30 minutes to the Ad hoc River Committee. Part of the presentation that wasn't given was the price. What will the price of the storm water, urban storm drainage system be by the year 2020? Roughly $8 billion in one of their slides. What does that mean? $8 billion worth of capital works? They themselves say 6% to 10% for operations and maintenance of those works. So that's only $500 million a year.
Excuse me, Dr. Williams. Folks, I know that we have a number of pressing items. If I can ask people to please move their conversations?
I can talk louder.
No, don't worry. That shouldn't be your onus. It should be everyone's here, council members, council staff, city staff, guests in the audience. If folks can please move their conversations out of council chambers to the extent possible so we can listen to our general public comment and afford our speakers that courtesy. Thank you. Dr. Williams, please proceed.
Thank you for a serious hearing. El Sereno. So what we're looking at is that we can't really trust almost any department within the city. Maybe not even done, I don't know. But I know that we're not getting information, we're not getting it in a timely fashion so that the public can respond in a meaningful manner, and we just give up. Some of us do, some of us don't. So I greatly appreciate that you go back to the Department of Public Works and perhaps apply the same effort as to the DWP, because Public Works will become another DWP. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that will be Sean Murphy. Good morning, sir.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Last year on Friday, one of the items on the agenda, item number 18, was a transfer of the Vision Theater parking lot to the Los Angeles Department of Transportation. And I brought up that with the parking garage fiasco going on with the city, what the transfer was all about. And Mr. Parks, Councilman Parks clarified it. He said that there would be no loss of funding, but that he also mentioned that this parking lot is closed 300 days a year. So in clarifying that first point, he muddled the second point. Could somebody please explain, while the city is in such financial straits, that it has parking lots closed 300 days a year? Makes perfectly good sense to me. And another item on your agenda from Wednesday, oh, excuse me, from the 24th, you authorized a request for a resolution, position authority for the Community Development Department to administer the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block grant, DECBG. Because on 6/2 of this year, you authorize the LAPD, LAPWP, to act as the agent of the city concerning the grants from Ara. And these are the same kind of grants, Ara grants. So I was wondering, it says, establish a new firm titled Ara EECBG. Who is overseeing the operation of these grants? The Community Development Department or the LAPWP? Because you have two conflicting agenda items, one on the 2nd of June and one on the 24th of September. Again, thank you for your clarification. And finally, regarding the Iowa moving to the harbor, the best part of the item is that it's a symbolic vote taken by the city council, because no matter what else, authority rests with the Harbor Department, because it's a proprietary department.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks.
And thank you for clarifying.
Sean Murphy is our next speaker. After that is Paul Derigo. Good morning, sir.
Yes, good morning, City Council, everybody. I hope you guys are staying cool in this ridiculous, ridiculous heat. It was 113 at downtown yesterday. All the power went out in West Hollywood and every other cities. I don't know why you guys are not replacing the transformers. We still have a lot of old transformers that need to be replaced. I don't know why DWP is not replacing them. Please replace the transformers, DWP. Also, I'm supporting Meg Woodman for governor of California. She will do a great job. She will create jobs, she will do, create jobs and everything else. Jerry Brown will not. Please vote, when you vote, please vote for Meg Woodman. Thank you. I'm not going to have Jerry Brown for governor.
Thank you. Paul Derigo is our next speaker. After that is Noel Weiss. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Paul Derigo. I'm a volunteer with L.A. Animal Services. And I'm here to, what I'm here to say is only my own opinion. It doesn't represent the department or the management of that department. But I'm here today to talk to you about the Reserved Animal Control Officer Program. If anybody's familiar with L.A. Animal Services, we currently have a goal of zero kill for the city. If you look at the statistics online, currently, our euthanasia rate is 42%. That's two years we've been working on this. It's unacceptable. It really is. But we either have time or we have money. And one of the things I've noticed about the department is that we do have people, we have volunteers. Now, we only have at any one time in Los Angeles, at night, one to two officers to cover anywhere from Somar to San Pedro. That's an unfathomable amount of territory to cover for animal services for our community and to help out animals in abuse situations. I'd like to revitalize that Reserve Animal Control Officer Program by bringing on volunteers that will do 16 hours a month for a commitment of one year. We need to raise $1,500 per officer, and we're going to continue the program ongoing right now. Currently, we have one reserved animal control officer left in this program. So I'd like to ask the council members and the city for the support of this department, that we take on the goal of zero kill for L.A., that we support the Reserve Animal Control Officer Program, because I've been going out to the neighborhood councils and speaking, and I've been telling them the situation. A lot of people don't know, and I think that's currently probably why we don't have the results that we expect, which is zero kill. So again, when it comes time to more of these events, you're going to hear more from me on these issues as we come down the line, but when you do hear, this is what I'm trying to propose to you, is just to look at where we're at, look where we need to be, and the programs that we need to implement to support the new general manager on these programs. And also, if it's possible to request an agenda item for more conversation and discussion about these items, I'd like to request that.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your testimony. Thank you for being down here today. Noel Weiss is our next speaker. After that is John Walsh.
Morning, council. The truth will set you free. I'm here to advocate again for the release by the Planning Department of the SB 1818 data. Mr. Reyes isn't here today, so it's a little unfair, maybe, to talk about him in his absence, but the bottom line is, we've been sitting on this for almost two years. It's not right. The council, in order to make policy, is going to need the data. Now, this was something that was ordered by the council two years ago when they passed the implementation ordinance, and I want to share a little story with the council and the public as to why it's really necessary. Fountain and Gower, that was a project in Mr. Garcetti's district. A rogue planning department basically rode roughshod over the people in that area. It would have destroyed, if the project would have gone through SB 1818, six affordable units. There are 11 now. Instead, after the community wasn't getting anywhere with the planning department, happened to come to my attention, I brought it to Mr. Garcetti's attention, and the bottom line is, the net result, because of the second look and giving the community an opportunity, we now end up with 22 affordable housing units. So you're in a situation where these little time bombs, these SB 1818 time bombs are planted all over the city. Mr. Krikorian's introduced a motion, Mr. Corretts has introduced a motion to get at the data. This is something that you need. We're not getting it. The only way to get it is a Rule 54. Unfortunately, nobody on the council has the balls to basically make a Rule 54 motion. So therefore, I, it falls to the president of the council, in my humble opinion, since he has more power than Mr. Reyes, to be able to make something happen. And I urge the president of the council, and hopefully, Mr. Rosendahl, others on this council, will stand up and get this matter before so we can get the data. And it's just a question of letting it out of jail. It's in prison, and one guy out of 4 million people, Ed Reyes, shouldn't be in a position to control this kind of an important issue. It's, I'm not advocating Rule 54, except under exceptional circumstances. This is an exceptional circumstance. Please, Mr. Garcetti, make the motion. If Mr. Reyes won't, we got two motions, one Krikorian's motion and one Mr. Uizar's motion, to get this data going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just so you know, we did a Rule 54 on Friday, Mr. Weiss on the mansionization ordinance. John Walsh. After Mr. Walsh will be Dagoberto Reyes.
At HollywoodHighlands.org, Twitter, at Hollywood Dems. Been a teacher, L.A. USD, 25 years before that New York City school system, before that Saudi Ethiopia Peace Corps. The Times murdered a teacher this over the weekend. Look at the Daily News. Hotline for stress, readied by L.A. USD in wake of teacher's apparent suicide. USD in wake of teacher's apparent suicide. Rigoberto Ruiz committed suicide because his name was on a database, published by the L.A. Times. Not the statistics, the names. The way you and I, Eric, had our ancestors' names published by the Nazis. He was not in very good shape. He went out and killed himself. The database is still up there. Take the database down. This is the first time any database like this has ever happened, and teachers are dying. They're shooting themselves, and the President of the United States on the same page. Obama says poorly-preferred teachers should get out. That's what Barry Obama said to Rigoberto Ruiz. And I want to tell you what the face of teachers are. This is in 1966. The majority of teachers at L.A. USD don't look like me. The majority of teachers are minorities. And this is racist, Sam Zell racist. The number one, the Metropolitan Editor of the L.A. Times, the number one person who killed Rigoberto Ruiz is David Lauder. I'm asking for everybody here to call him, and call him, and tell him to take it off, and call him a homicidal racist. Call, all you have to do is call 1-800-LA-TIME, PRESS 5, and ask for David Lauder. You are killing us! You are killing us!
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Dagoberto Reyes is our next speaker. After that is Cecilia Rodriguez. Good morning, Mr. Reyes.
Muy buenos dias. Señores miembros de Consejo Municipal de la ciudad de Los Ángeles.
Momento por transacción.
Mi nombre es Dagoberto Reyes.
Momentito.
Good morning. My name is Dagoberto Reyes.
Soy el director de la Casa de la Cultura en Los Ángeles.
I am the director of the Cultural House in Los Angeles.
Establecido en 1996.
Established in 1996.
Ubicada en el sector de Pico Union, Westlake.
Is located in Pico, in the area of Pico Union, Westlake.
Servimos a las necesidades culturales de la comunidad.
We serve the cultural needs of the community.
Salvadoran y mesoamericana.
Of the Salvadorian and mesoamerican community.
Últimamente establecimos una radio por internet.
Lately, we established a radio.
Con una programación variada.
With a program that has a variety of different things.
Ante los incidentes en Westlake, por motivo de la muerte del inmigrante guatemalteco.
Due to the incidents that happened in Westlake and the, the disease of, the murder of that Guatemaltecan immigrant.
Manuel Jimenez. Y ante la política de marginalización y exclusión y discriminación contra las comunidades centroamericanas en Los Ángeles y en este distrito de la ciudad.
Due to the murder of Manuel, Manuel Jimenez.
Manuel Jimenez.
And due to the politics of exclusion and discrimination against the Central American communities in Los Angeles, in this district of the city.
Nosotros pedimos investigue primero.
We are requesting you to first investigate.
Los criterios con que se otorgan los gran.
The criteria that you use to grant grants.
Particularmente de los provenientes del Community Development Department Administración.
Especially the CRA.
Por la oficina del alcalde. And segundo, queremos preguntar por qué ninguna organización centroamericana cultural se le ha otorgado un espacio en nuestra área. Ed Reyes ha traído miembros de organizaciones culturales hasta de San Francisco, pero menos a una organización centroamericana.
Ed Reyes brought some representative from San Francisco, but none from a Central American, a Central American country, and I, we want to know why we don't have a space for a Central American organization in the infrastructure of the city of Los Angeles.
Gracias por permitirme presentarme ante ustedes, y esperemos que la ciudad de Los Ángeles tome acción.
Thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you, and we hope that the city of Los Angeles takes action.
Para dar respuesta a esta pregunta. Muchas gracias.
Respond to this question. Thank you.
Muchas gracias, señor. Cecilia Rodriguez is our next speaker. After that is Salvador Sanabria.
Gracias. Muy buenos dias. Good morning. My name is Cecilia Rodriguez, the presidenta de la Leya Honduras in Los Angeles. Querido miembro del Consejo Municipal, querido señor presidente del Consejo Municipal, Eric Garcetti.
Dear members of City Council and dear president of the council, Mr. Eric Garcetti.
Mi nombre es Cecilia Rodriguez.
My name is Cecilia Rodriguez.
Y soy la presidenta de la Alianza Hondureña de Los Ángeles.
I'm chair of the Hondureño Alliance of Los Angeles.
Que como agencia no lucrativa provee.
That as a nonprofit organization, it provides.
Servicios de la comunidad hondureña centroamericana desde el 2001.
Services to the Hondureña and Central American communities since 2001.
La comunidad centroamericana ha hecho la petición de la creación de la Plaza Francisco Morazán.
This community has requested the creation of the Francisco Morazán Plaza.
Desde el año 2005.
Since 2005.
Hasta la fecha no ha sido aprobada.
And it hasn't been approved yet.
Quiero manifestar que no puede ser que un solo centroamericano represente a todo nuestro, a todos nosotros, ante el Consejo Municipal.
I just want to say that not one Central American representative can represent all the Central American community at City Council.
Y la oficina del alcalde, y sea la única organización que recibe cientos de miles de dólares por parte de la ciudad.
And before the mayor's office, and it cannot be the only organization that receives hundreds of thousands of dollars by the city.
Como contribuyente a la oficina del fiscal.
As.
De la ciudad de Los Angeles.
As a taxpayer.
Creo que nos merecemos el compartimiento justo.
I think that we deserve to share this in a fair way.
De los recursos de la ciudad.
To share the resources from the city, you know, to be fair when you, when we share these resources.
Asimismo, condenamos la práctica de la confiscación de los vehículos.
We don't approve that cars be confiscated.
Y pedimos un alto a la política e inclusión por parte de la ciudad de Los Angeles hacia nuestra gente.
And we ask that you stop the exclusion politics to our people. Thank you. Thank you.
Gracias. Salvador Sanabria is next. After that is Francisco Rivera. Buenos dias.
Good morning, members of the City Council. Council president, I want to take this opportunity to address you in public comments as the executive director of El Rescat, a nonprofit community-based organization established in 1981. The oldest organization providing services to the mesoamerican community in Los Angeles and in the United States, as well other 28 immigrant nationalities. The reason why I'm here is to bring to your attention the reality of Central Americans in the city of Los Angeles. The death of Manuel Jimenez zoom brought to the attention of the entire nation the economic and social realities of Westlake, Pico Union. I want to congratulate Chief of Police Charlie Beck for his approach to the incidents and for the immediately addressing personally the issues related to this neighborhood. Now it is time to talk about the issue pending in the same area. These are issues of marginalization, exclusion, and discrimination by agencies, departments, and offices of this city council and the office of the mayor. On top of the neglect of the city of Los Angeles, there is also a lack of representation, as well the participation of members of the California Assembly. I want to conclude that we are willing to start a real dialogue with city officials about the realities of this neighborhood and bring inclusiveness to the serious issues related to this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I know this isn't in today's agenda, so I'll just briefly say, I know I spoke with Chief Beck as well about his establishment of a Central American Advisory Committee, and I know you've been involved in those discussions as well, and we thank him for moving forward with that expeditiously. Francisco Rivera is next, and then we'll go to Van Nuys.
President and members of the City Council, as a member of the Central American community based in the Pico Union, Westlake area, I am here today to request the disrespect of the city of Los Angeles and the Mayor Antonio Villarreal's office. But the lack of respect I am asking you to give to my community is the way you offend Mr. Carlos Baquerano, executive director of the Salvadoran American Leadership and Education Fund, SALF, by granting him $100,000 in 2005, $104,000 in 2007, $100 for 2008 and 2009, and $72,000 in 2010, as established in contract with the Community Development Department. Mr. Baquerano is quoted in the L.A. Times saying that the mayor needs to reach us. Well, the mayor, through Mr. Robert Science in CDD, and with the help of Mr. Rafael Gonzalez of the Office of Neighborhood Services, and Mr. José Ardea, chief of staff, Councilmember Ed Reyes, these little stars of Westlake, Pico Union, have been reaching big time with Mr. Baquerano, to the point of political tampering of the process of the resignation of the historical Central Little America and Plaza Francisco Morazán. SALF have a contract signed by Christine Essel of the CRA in June 3, 2010, and with the Vista Bueno from the chief legislative analyst and the city clerk about creating the plaza, Oscar Romero. This can be only called for what it is, traffic of influence in City Hall. The only thing you need is to be a friend of the mayor, and then you can come with the Robert stamping of the city council, the CRA, the city clerk, and I provide to you an attachment with the contract numbers and salves and CDD and a copy of the contract. So we request the first chair of the city resources for the Guatemalan, Honduran, Nicaraguan, and Salvadoran. We just want equality and justice, and here is a copy of all the documents as a matter of public record.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Merriam-Fogler in Van Nuys. She'll be followed by Donna Perman. Good morning, Ms. Fogler.
Hello. Yes, you know, good morning. I want to tell you something, nothing to erase or anything, but you know, the communist elements started here back in the 60s, and started with Martin Luther, he had a membership with the Communist Party. And telling you, the worst enemies of their own, you know, you know, like people of their own. And we can't have that. We have to unite. We can't be divided. Exactly what they're doing here, folks, they're introducing everybody to communism in this country. You see, Obama has a connection with it, too. He's all in bed with this communist agenda. He's trying to do this with the health care. He's forcing you that we have a membership, have to have health care, or you get charged. You know, in the recent moment, the last week, there was a China, the Chinese attacked Japan. And that's the reason why World War II, why they attacked us in Pearl Harbor, was because the Japanese were having a problem with the Chinese. And at the end of the new movie with, on the Pearl Harbor movie, they show on the, on the AMC, they show the Chinese how they rescued an American at the end of the movie. But it goes to show you that you cannot be in bed with your enemies too much, because that's exactly why, how we were able to beat Hitler, is because we, we lined up with the Russians. And now today, folks, they're helping Iran build a big, big bomb. And Garcetti, I'm surprised, because of Major Hutzpah here, that you're, that you know, being in the Navy Reserve. My dad, all his family served in the Navy, I mean, Air Force, my uncle, my other uncle hit the beach in Normandy. I mean, I want to have one minute to speak on 18, at least. I want to be able to speak on 36 for two minutes. So I want to get to 35 and one. Just want to say that we have to be vigilant and don't let them have communism take over our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Perman will be our next speaker, also in Van Nuys.
Yeah, hello.
Dennis Hathaway will follow her.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. First, I would like to talk about how can you ask people to take mass transit if it's next impossible to buy the bus pass? I could see it selling the first day on the 25th of the month. Now this month, it sold out in the morning. I have to go to Wilshire and La Brea. If I knew how to drive, believe me, I wouldn't take that mass transit. How can you have only a handful of bus passes with, when people need to buy passes for LA DOT and combination LA DOT metro? People's fault for voting for Popar if they're taking money away from the buses to go for the rail. Anyway, the second, I want to talk about Arizona is, is trying to protect our borders, you know, protect our country. We need to take care of our border. We have some dangerous people below the border in the Mexican drug cartel in El Salvador, which brings us to drugs, yes, hard drugs, and human smuggling, kidnapping. The way they threaten these people, the physical harm, even kill them if they don't have people pay, someone pay for them. Then they, let's see. We need to stop human smuggling as a form of slavery. Also, terrorists who wanted to destroy America and come through Mexico to Arizona, probably to California. They need to, Arizona needs to work on that law and make it more fair, yes, but don't get rid of it. We need it. Forty-two states have some form of looking at who's coming in. We have to. What we don't know can kill us. See what's happening in 9/11? They got vital information about our airports, Boston, I believe. We are too gullible. It can destroy us. Look at all those who died in 9/11. What we have, what have we learned? Not to make waves, boycott Arizona. Why do we have so many that are coming illegally? Someone does take those jobs, the illegals take. It's legal aliens. Remember them. They fought for the same jobs, sometimes for the same benefits. We need to protect the rights of legal aliens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. Next is Dennis Hathaway, here in council chambers. Merv Evans will follow Mr. Hathaway. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. I'm Dennis Hathaway, president of the Coalition of Ban Billboard Bright. I want to raise, call your attention to an issue involving street furniture advertising. I have a publication from the Bureau of Street Services that says CBS Deco will not display any advertising for tobacco-related products nor hard liquor on any of its furniture amenities. I have photographs I took just in the past couple of months. Here's a bus shelter with a Maker's Mar Whiskey ad. Here's a kiosk with a Don Julio tequila ad. Here's a kiosk for a Belvedere vodka ad. And by the way, I just saw this morning, there's a kiosk directly north of City Hall on Broadway with a Belvedere vodka ad on it, and I'm sure that some of you could probably look out your office windows and see it. I think that, I just took these photographs at random. I think that if one did a survey, you could find a lot more of these. Publication also states that these kind of advertising, advertising will not be placed within 500 feet of schools or churches. I have here a photograph of a bus shelter on La Brea that's about 300 feet from a synagogue and a Hebrew school. So CBS Deco is violating these restrictions. And I think that the city, this is a legal product. It's something that I use myself from time to time. But I think that the city should now be in the position of helping market alcohol of this type for these advertisers. And I hope that the city council will address this and take, take action to make sure that these restrictions are enforced. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis, and thank you for bringing that to light. And I'm sure, we'll work with Mr. Rosendahl, who chairs our Public Works Committee, which oversees street services, I'm sorry, which is transportation, Mr. Weezer, the Public Works Committee. I was, I went back in time two years to, to see what we can do to address those issues with street services. Merv Evans is our next speaker.
I would hope that all of our political leadership in the city and our mayor would join me in urging Secretary of Agriculture Tom Vilsack and the Vice- join me in urging Secretary of Agriculture Tom Vilsack and the Vice President to administratively move on doubling the food stamp SNAP program. Currently, a family with three children get about $500 a month. That doesn't take that family for 30 days. We need to give those families $800, $1,000, $1,200 in direct food assistance. We need to do better. One in four children in this city are on food stamps. One in eight families are on food stamps. It is ridiculous to have hunger in Los Angeles, yet at the same time spend hundreds of billions of dollars on corporate bailouts that are wrong. And in direct response to Mr. Murphy, Jerry Brown is our friend, Barbara Boxer is a friend of our community. Let us stand on Election Day with Jerry Brown and Barbara Boxer. Thank you.
We're going to open the roll on number four. We need to reconsider number four, colleagues. On the reconsideration, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Submit without recommendation. Somebody needs to make a motion to move.
So, number four, Ms. Perry.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have to reconsider item four for technical reasons, not substantive.
The reconsideration was voted on, so it's now up to you for.
All right, yes, and it came out of committee and was submitted without recommendation. Just going to put that on the record.
So, we want to now vote on number four out of committee without recommendation?
That's right. Because we didn't have a quorum, that's all.
All right, there is a motion required, Mr. City Attorney?
We can move it as a communication from the chair. We were lacking a quorum at that time, so that's why it was submitted without recommendation. But it's just, just a communication.
Move the, move the recommendation.
For clarification, would counsel like to move.
Let me clarify for you. I just got something from the clerk, and they're requesting that the submit without recommendation means the following recommendations as contained in Resolution Number 011-033 and approved by the Board of Water and Power Commissioners on July 22nd and August 8, 2010. City Attorney report, subject to approval by the mayor, and then that, we need to move that section.
Mr. Clerk, is that satisfactory? Very good.
Mr. Garcetti, seconds.
Mr. Garcetti, seconds. All right, now that matters before us.
Yeah.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Very well. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Clerk, next item, please. That brings us back to item number one, called special for cards. All right, number one. John Walsh, number one, sir. HollywoodHighlands.org. Mr. Walsh.
And twittering at Hollywood DMS, the EMS, and emailing at HollywoodDMS@gmail.com. Can you believe what they're slipping through now? Mr. Wesson, I love your cute little animals. My landlord would shoot me if I brought one of them home. He's very, very nasty, sometimes. This increases the adoption fees for kennel and exhibition permit fees, adoption fees at animal service. What this will cause, Mr. Wesson, is the death of animals. The more expensive the animal is, the fewer people will buy them, and those horrible people, and you know how they kill the animals, putting them in that little machine, taking the air out, destroying, and their eyes bulge? That's what you're doing when you vote in this. You know, it's nice to know the City Council just doesn't, treats people like animals and animals like people. In other words, this is a death sentence for animals. Look at it. Revising and increasing adoption fees, increasing adoption fees. That's what's down here now. I hope that other people will show up. In the meantime, HollywoodHighlands.org. I'm leaving early so I can put a new post up there. One minute.
Let's go to the Valley. Merriam Vogler, on item number one.
Good morning. Yeah, um, this is ridiculous to increase the adoption fee again, folks. What this is going to do is make a big, big impact on the adoption for our, for our pets. You know, this is a tragedy that you, you want to set this endeavor. Well, I just came from vacation, out of town, and they are giving newspapers and cans to help save animals. I don't know why the City of L.A. can't do that. I don't know what they do with all the recycling they collect from the recycle bin. Why can't that money be earmarked for this? What a tragedy, and it's a chutzpah. I want to save my, take the, save my minute, the other minute on 18, so I can have the two minutes there, and 36 and 35 each.
All right, thank you. We're back to number one. Mr. Labonge.
I just want a technical question. How is this related to other costs in the county or other municipalities? Is anyone from Animal Services here to answer that?
Well, we have on the speaker, Mr. Labonge, is that your question? You want Animal Services to come forward?
Yeah, someone from Animal Services just asked the question, how does it relate to the rest of the county?
Is Animal Services here?
Yeah.
Animal Services representative?
Linda Barth was here. I think it's worthy to know that question.
Well, let's set aside for now, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti?
Hi, this is just the rule 23.
And then, um, we'll hear from Mr. Garcetti, and then Mr. Smith. Ms. Hahn? You're not on there. All right, Mr. Smith?
Well, yeah, I wanted to have.
Hold on, Mr. Smith. Ms. Hahn, did you push your button? It's, it's, it's not coming up. It's coming up. It's coming up, Garcetti. We'll put, we'll put, I'm sorry. Now you're on. Someone's playing with the switch.
Who's on first?
Mr. Smith, go ahead, then we'll go to Ms. Hahn.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Smith and Ms. Hahn. Somehow, your number wasn't coming up. Mr.
This is a lovely.
All right, Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you.
We'll technical fix it.
Just to answer some questions that people may have about this. First of all, as you know, in the budget, we requested every fee in the city that we have as a fee to be looked at and determined whether it needs to be upgraded. Some of the fees we found hadn't been updated in decades, and some of the Animal Services fees has not been upgraded since the 1960s. What we do is ask for full cost recovery. On the case in point, what you have here is a very small number of cases. One is on the upgrade, the fees for the horse corrals. There's only about 20 or so in the city, about 20, 25 of those in the city. Not a big number of people affected. The number of horses that are picked up, that are injured, dying, that we pick up, there's only three last year. And so, we're not looking at large amounts of money, we're looking at full cost recovery for the few services we have to the very small number of people. We are not increasing the cost of keeping horses in the city to the horsekeepers. This is strictly to the professional corrals that maintain the horses, large numbers of them. It's taken it to $300 a year. For those that board many, many horses, some of them board 100 horses, the cost is $300. So, we're just talking about a few small permits. The dollars to the city is very minimal, quite frankly. This is not a big impact, and to the regular horsekeeper out there that may board their horse at one place, the cost factor may be a buck to their horse for the whole year. It's a very small amount of money, and it's not a big impact to the people of Los Angeles. It's really very, to a very small number of people. And again, these are, these are fees and rates that have not been increased for decades. So, I hope Linda Barth will get back here to answer those questions with specifics, but that's basically what you have before you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith, for that explanation. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. So, there's no one here today from Animal Services? Yeah, because, you know, I have a problem from this. I think this sends a bad message right now. Our efforts in the city are trying to get more of these animals adopted out of our shelters so that ultimately we don't have to kill them. So, it seems to me, at this time in a bad economy, to raise the fees for adoption sends the wrong message. And I know this is a package deal, so that actually if you adopt the pet, the fees will go towards spaying and neutering and the microchip. But as we were talking about, if you're adopting a pet that has already been neutered, and maybe already has a microchip, then you're at a disadvantage. So, an animal, if it's already been, you know, altered, is at a disadvantage, and maybe someone goes in there and doesn't want to adopt it because they're losing money on it. I think it's a bad message. I don't like the fact that Animal Services is not here. My recommendation is, colleagues, we hold this. I also feel like there's been no outreach on this fee raising. I know there's a lot of people that don't know that we're doing this today and have not had an opportunity to weigh in on this, so I'm not comfortable at this time voting to raise adoption fees in this economy.
Ms. Hahn, I understand from the City Attorney that there is an Animal Services Commission meeting taking place at this moment on the 10th floor, and if we want to hold this on the table, and when they conclude that commission meeting, we can probably get some folks down here to answer these questions. Mr. Smith?
I was just going to point out, while I understand what you're saying, Ms. Hahn, what we have before you on the, on the adoption fees were approved in the budget already. You've already voted for that.
I know.
You put it in the budget already, so if you want to take that out, it would require you to bring that and take that out of the budget and then replace the money somewhere. Okay?
Mr. Labonge?
I'm holding it on the desk, right? Ms. Hahn made good points. I'm concerned that some people don't know, and they want to know, and how much it is.
Without opposition, we can hold that on the desk, colleagues, so Animal Services gives general manager and other representatives can come to counsel. So, without opposition, let's hold that matter on the desk, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to item number two.
Pardon me?
That brings us to item number two, called special for cards.
All right, number two. Hollywood Island, Hollywood Highlands, John Walsh. Number two, Mr. Walsh.
You know, your heart, John Walsh, your heart bleeds for small business. Okay, number one, small business, fine. What does this do? It raises $13, the penalty for false alarms for small businesses to the police. Well, the reason for that is the alarm systems don't work properly. I'm telling you right now, you know, and it destroys jobs. I want to point out that rescuing the people from Buchenwald destroyed the Bob Dwyer small industry business, okay? It destroyed it. I believe in job killing, but I'd like to finish my minute by translating what I said into another language, and the language is, of course, of dogs and cats, who cannot speak here. So, for the next minute, listen carefully. Do we have any dogs and cats who'll translate for me? Okay, they said that they don't like false alarms either. And all the cats, and also [dog barking]. That was the horse, because apparently it only concerns horses. I just want you to know that [dog barking] that is for all the cow adoptions, the cow adoptions. And I'd just like to say, you can, HollywoodHighlands.org, you know where you can put the 26.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. The horse was the, the best impression, thank you. Now, Ms. Hahn? Ms. Hahn?
Yes. I don't even know what to say. That was a, that was a new high or new low, I don't know. Mr. Tefank, we're, and I know probably it was part of the budget that we raise the alarm fees. You know how I feel about this. I've, you know, never been completely satisfied on our ability to detect when it actually is a false alarm. So, my questions to you are, when we have told somebody it's a false alarm, how did we deem it to be a false alarm?
Very good. Richard Tefank, Executive Director of the Board of Police Commissioners. The process for determining a false alarm begins in Commission Investigation Division when we, on a daily basis, will look at the activities of the day before. July 1 of 2009, our new false alarm management system went operational, and, believe it or not, it is called Cry Wolf. So, the only interpretation you did not, or impression you did not hear is a wolf, but Cry Wolf is the software.
Please, please, don't.
I will not do it, ma'am. Cry Wolf is the, is the software that manages the program. So, our personnel, our staff, go into it, and will see an item where we have a false alarm. What we are able to do with the new software, it integrates everything back into Communication Center, where the Public Safety Representative actually receives the call. So, we're able to look at the call, the comments on the call, the responding officers, the time they arrived, the time they cleared, and any notes that the responding officers made. So, from that information, that begins our original and initial check. At that point, unless there's anything that says uniquely that this was nothing other than a false alarm, such as no incident report was taken, indicate there was an attempt break-in, and that would be on there, therefore, it would not be a false alarm. It would have been a valid response. So, if it shows false alarm, the system that we have now, we generate the bills out of the system.
Right. My concern is that when an officer arrives, sometimes hours later after the alarm has been set off, I've also know for a fact that sometimes officers don't do a perimeter inspection. They don't go in the backyard, they don't walk around, and just from all appearances at the front door, it seems to be a false alarm, but in reality, it may be not be. I know this because I get calls in my office, Mr. Tefank, from constituents who say they came home, the alarm went off, they went around the back door, and there actually was a break-in, but they were billed for a false alarm.
If that's the case.
Well, how are we missing these?
Well, we're not missing those, ma'am. If, if they have made a police report, and there's a police report on an attempt break-in or an actual break-in, that is waived. And so, when the, usually what happens is, the bill will go to the resident. The resident will then call us and say, the officers responded, and there was an attempt entry.
Right.
And we'll look again on the call, we'll see that there was no report taken. We will then follow up back to the area that the officers are assigned to through their watch commander, back to the original responding officers to determine if, in fact, that what is being reported to us is accurate, and if a report is necessary, we'll have a report taken, and then we'll waive that alarm because it is a valid alarm. As to the issue of long-delayed response times, again, we will have those, I will say, infrequently. The vast majority of our alarm calls have a response time within 30 minutes. But those that, there could be anomalies where busy night, they're outside of that parameter, and we get calls from the citizens. We'll talk to the citizen. If it is their first alarm, we offer them alarm school.
Right.
They can do alarm school via mail, the fee is waived, there's no penalty to them. We also will have situations where we'll be able to validate if there were power failures. We go through DWP and confirm that. If there were excessive winds that could have activated an alarm, we're able to validate that. With our current system, we have a much more robust system and ability to deal with the false alarms and the comments from citizens that, in fact, was not a false alarm.
Right.
It was a valid alarm.
Right.
And so, I believe we have.
So, do you feel the appeal process, I'm calling it that, that just basically means the constituents' ability to call and say, I think that's the mistake?
Absolutely.
You feel like that is fair and, you know, quick?
I do, ma'am.
Okay.
We are, we deal with those on a daily basis, and all I would suggest is when the constituents call your office, have your staff reach out to myself and Ms. Eva Vega, my assistant, and we have a whole process. We call people back, and we've done that through other council offices, and I believe that we have shown a great deal of responsiveness to people, and we certainly are, I would say, liberal in our interpretation of, of that waiver process, because we understand the impact financially to folks, but we also must be fair and consistent and not arbitrary in our enforcement of the false alarm.
What percentage are we collecting of these false alarm fees?
The most recent percentage, we're at 73% with our new system, up from about 52% in past years.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, your time.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Just a quick question. Many of my constituents have said to me that, you know, a burglar tries to get in, sets off the alarm, realizes that there's an issue, and the potential burglar leaves, and then they're fined for a false alarm. And you were just discussing it a little bit with Ms. Hahn. Explain it again for me, for my understanding.
Okay, if, if a resident states that there was an attempt break-in at my house that the officers who responded did not find, when they give us that information, the first thing we do is we reach back out to the area that those officers responded from, try to reach the original responding officers to see if we can validate any information that they tell us. If, in fact, there was an attempt break-in and the officers did not take If in fact there was an attempt break-in and the officers did not take a report, they will have to take a report, they'll have to document that and an incident report. Once we receive that, there is no fine because it is a valid alarm. We do not ourselves go out and do a physical inspection of that. I can tell you, we've had individuals who receive the alarm bills, they'll send us pictures, they'll do a whole variety of things to demonstrate their case, and by and large, we do not have those issues occur that often. What, again, I would suggest to you and any of your colleagues, that if you have these calls come to your office, please forward them to our office as soon as possible and then we'll be responsive.
Could you do this for me? We had some burglary in Mar Vista the other day, and the police, and even the state police got involved, this chip folks, and I was very proud of our police, they got these folks. But they've been banging on a lot of people's doors in that neighborhood there. Can you give me a breakdown of CD-11 where the alleged false alarms came in, or where the issues may be, that we could look at in the context of issues like that and my constituents? Do you break them down by district?
Our software will not be able to break them down by council district. It does not have that ability.
Can you do it by, if I said Mar Vista, Westchester?
Sure, we could run the streets, the hundred blocks within streets and those kind of things, get you activity of number of alarms that came in and the number that were false during a period of time.
I'd like that as a backup to some of the issue on that.
Absolutely, we can do that, sir.
Thank you.
That's not a problem. Appreciate it.
Any questions for any of your colleagues, council members, we'll be happy to respond to those questions and concerns from your constituents. Ms. Hahn?
Yes, so tell us what exactly we're raising the fee to today?
We're raising the fee from one hundred and thirty-six dollars to one hundred and forty-nine dollars. The way that fee-
And the reason for that is what?
It's full cost recovery. As all of the permit fees that are part of this agenda report, there I believe are about fifty-three different permit fees that are included in here, some are being adjusted up, some are being adjusted down. The reason the alarm fee is going up, we capture the time it takes for officers to respond, there'll be two officers to respond, the time it takes for finance to do their processing, what little bit that is, the time it takes for Commission Investigation Division to process the billing, and the time it takes for the Public Safety Representative at the police department to answer the phone. All of that time is taken into consideration. What really drives these numbers, ma'am, are when the cost of salary-
I worked really hard to get this title, don't call me ma'am.
I'm sorry. I've heard that before. Council member, I apologize. The fees come about based on the fact when salaries go up or benefits go up. And in this year, the cap rate for sworn personnel went up.
Right.
And that drove the percentage of the response time up as far as fees are concerned.
Right.
That's how the numbers come about.
Right, and I hate this because, you know, bottom line is, I think people in Los Angeles who put alarms in their house are doing that because, you know, they probably feel like we're understaffed in the police department anyway, we're way understaffed in terms of the number of police officers we should have. They're doing that to protect their homes, you know. In fact, many of the burglar alarms were put in as a recommendation from the senior lead officers who said, you might want to think about putting an alarm in. So I always have this, you know, I'm on the side of homeowners who have put alarms in. I think they're doing it to help the police department, to help to prevent break-ins, because we know if there was a burglary, the amount of police time, detective time, you know, would probably be even more. And I think if we recovered a hundred percent of the collections, that would be cost recovery. And I think you would make your money back if you collected the fines one hundred percent as opposed to raising them. I would rather see work on collecting what is owed to us than raising the fee. I know, again, we voted for it in the budget, but I think I voted no on the budget, so I think I'm going to vote no on this and encourage you to work with collections to recover what is owed to you. Because I still think, again, sends a bad message, sends a bad message in this tough times that we're raising the fees if you have a false. Nobody wants a false alarm purposely. No one intends it to be a false alarm. They're really just trying to protect themselves and their families, so I understand the plight you're in, but I'm thinking about voting no on this.
If I could just give you one statistic, last year, there were about forty-seven thousand false alarms in the city of Los Angeles, ninety-seven percent of them were false.
Thank you.
So the police resources that respond to that were attempting to recover.
And Mr. T. Fink, you have some experience in law enforcement?
Yes, sir.
Some extent.
Yes, council member, I apologize.
Some extensive experience. Okay, thank you.
Nothing that you don't.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonge. That matters now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven, eyes, one, no.
Mr. Wesson?
Mr. President, I'd like to take a moment to, for an introduction. We are honored today to have representatives from the Kempo government from Korea with us today. We have the mayor, Mayor Hugh, and Mr. Garcetti's counterpart, the president of the Los Angeles, I mean, the Kempo City Council, Mr. P. is here. Many of you might know that years ago, the airport was in the Kempo area, it has since been moved, and now they're embarking upon a, the possibility of a giant revitalization effort. And anyway, I just want to welcome you to our great city, Mr. Mayor, and to the council president. To my left is our council president. Enjoy yourself, and we're really glad that you took a moment to spend some time with us. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for being here. Welcome to Los Angeles. Thank you, welcome. We now have a representative from Animal Services, so we can go back to number one, colleagues. So if we can get the Animal Services representative, who I think is in the room, to the center table, please.
I did see her.
Is she back?
Ms. Barth.
I thought she was back. Animal Services representative in the chambers?
Ms. Lynda Barth, you're being paged.
Do we know where she is?
Yeah, right there.
Oh, can we get you to the center table, please, Ms. Barth?
Take a picture, they're coming up the side.
Me and colleagues on item number one. We now have the representative, Ms. Hahn, please.
Thank you. Okay, so you were explaining to us why, I'm sorry.
I have one question.
Mr. LaBonge first, because I ask first.
Pardon me?
Only real quick, where are we on the scale of the eighty-eight cities in the county, County of Los Angeles on these fees? If you have a horse in Glendale, what do you pay if you have a horse in Los Angeles? What's the difference?
I don't believe pasty humane handles horses. It's relatively unusual that humane, that-
Glendale has horses.
You mean for a permit, for a stable?
All I'm asking, Ms. Barth, is what is our relationship here in our fee structure to the rest of the county?
Our fees are very comparable to the County of Los Angeles, yes.
Do you have a list of that?
I could provide you the list. I don't have a list yet.
Please, because I think it would be important to have, for me to have a list so we see that's fair. And then how much outreach did you have with, like, Lynn Brown and Corral Thirty-Eight and all the equestrian groups?
The, in regards to the raising of the stable fees and so forth?
Yes.
Our instructions through the budget process was to make sure we got full cost recovery. So all we did was calculate actual cost recovery.
No, no, did you go out and talk to the people?
We did not speak to the stable owners about cost recovery formula.
Okay, so here's the problem, Mr. Smith and others, I'm just saying, it's important we reach out, because I think people will be supportive of us, we reach out. When they know that the money's going for the equine tax, it goes to equine issues, they support it. So it's hard for me to support something unless there's a sweep of effort to try to do that. So thank you for your comments.
Ms. Hahn, please.
Thank you. Okay, what is it right now when someone walks in to adopt a dog?
It's a hundred and two dollars, fifteen for a microchip, forty for spay-neuter, and forty for adoption fee. Plus for a dog, if the dog is over four months and they live in the city of Los Angeles, they would pay a fifteen dollar dog license fee, which is going up this week to twenty dollars.
So what are we doing today? We're not raising the fees, we're just bundling them?
Correct, we are bundling the fees.
So what if you were adopting a dog today that needed to be spayed or neutered?
It would cost you a hundred and seventeen dollars, presuming you also bought a dog license. It would be a hundred and two plus fifteen dollars for your dog license.
And what is, and today, it's the same amount?
Yes.
You're just unbundling it, or you're bundling it?
No, we're bundling it. Instead of it being unbundled, we're bundling it. Last year, the council approved a cost recovery methodology for setting our fees. We set our fees so that the adoption of a dog would be a hundred and two dollars plus the cost of a dog license, so generally a hundred and seventeen.
So you're trying to tell me it's the exact same cost?
Yes. The fees that were raised were the permits fees, because they're based on time for officers, and some relinquishment fees for equines, for example, but dogs, cats, rabbits-
So adopting a dog or cat is not-
Is the same as what you approved and took effect July 1, 2009.
Then what, I mean, honestly, colleagues, I do, but honestly, I still think it's a marketing issue. I think it's a message issue. I think people are going to believe that we've raised the fees. It's like the airlines. The airlines don't put on there that you have to pay for your bags, but when you get there, you have to pay for your bags. But they don't like to put it on their ticket because it discourages people from flying a certain airline. I think it's the same thing. I don't think we want to discourage people from adopting a dog. When they come in to adopt a dog, they need to be able to see, this is what it's going to cost.
Absolutely.
But this way, you bundled it and you've sent a message, and it's going to sound like we've raised the fees. I don't know why we're doing this.
Well, for one thing, I agree completely about making sure that people understand the breakdown of the cost and what we have currently, our posters, and we're just sort of reworking them, updating-
Right, so what was broken that we needed to fix?
The, one of the problems that we do have is people say, oh, it's only forty-seven to adopt a dog. Then they get up to the counter and they argue, well, I don't want a microchip, I don't need a microchip, but the law requires them to have a microchip. I don't need a spay or neuter, or I'll bring it back, or I'll take it to my own vet, and but the law requires that the animal be released. So what we found, you're absolutely right about the marketing issue, and sometimes it can cut two ways, because somebody says, well, wait a second, you brought me here because I thought I was going to get a fifty-dollar dog, but it's really a hundred and seventeen-dollar dog.
Right.
Because I have to buy a license, and I have to buy a microchip, and I have to buy spay-neuter. They're not options, they're not, you know-
What if the dog already has been neutered and already has a microchip? What if somebody just turned the dog back in?
They would still pay the total cost, it's fairly rare.
That doesn't seem fair.
And on a redemption, they would not pay, and rescue partners do not pay, but it's a very rare situation that an animal comes in with a microchip. Most of the time, it's an animal that is exchanged. In other words, someone adopts an animal, the animal gets sick, under the immunity code, they can return the animal and exchange it for another. So what they would do then is, although the animal comes back and it's been spay-neutered and it's microchipped, it's actually an exchange. So the adopter then chooses another animal and gets that one microchipped and spayed or neutered, and then someone else comes in and adopts the first animal. In order that we pay the vets and we pay the microchip cost, you see, I mean, that's generally speaking what happens when we have a return that's already microchipped and spay-neutered.
Did you do an outreach on this? Did the commission have hearings on this?
Yes, they did.
And what was the public's response?
I think the public was appreciative, and certainly the commission, we talked a lot about the fact that we'd raised prices in 2009, and it didn't look like we reached a price point that created a problem, because our adoption rates were still high, and that we'd already started to consolidate some fees at that time, and that that led to less contention at the counter, which means that transactions take place more quickly, and that that's a good thing.
So you're not raising the fees for adoption, for spay and neutering, or for microchip?
That's correct.
You're just bundling it?
For dogs, cats, and rabbits, that's correct.
Right.
Some of the permits and other fees are rising based on our cost recovery formulas.
What is a permit now for a cat? To get a permit for a cat?
Well, there is no permit, well, there's a registration for a cat, five dollars.
Oh, that hasn't raised?
No.
Okay. So which permits have been raised?
People who run animal-related businesses, pet stores, kennels, shows, circuses, rodeos, and so forth.
Okay.
Those are raised based on the actual time it takes an officer at fully burdened rates to do inspections.
So what we're doing today, you think, does not raise the cost for an average person who wants to go in and adopt one of our animals?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, and Mr. Parks, please.
I don't know how to follow that. Let me ask Sharon, would you come up? Ms. Hahn, one of the things I think is important on these fees, they're the same thing that we talked about during the budget, that if we don't collect fees, we do not have Animal Services employees, and all we're doing is a recovery of the work that they're doing. And I think, Sharon, why don't you explain on the budget how many, how much money we get from the fees and how it impacts the budget of Animal Services?
Animal Services currently collects around five million dollars a year in revenues, and this is primarily from adoptions and some of the permit fees that Linda was speaking of. This amount is a relatively small amount increase compared to that overall revenue. It's five million roughly. This would increase the revenue roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and this is primarily from the areas that Linda indicated. The adoption fees are not being changed for the most part. In fact, I think they might even be lowered a little bit with the bundling. So it's, well, actually, she indicates that it's even, so, but the fees are used to fund the Animal Services Department. You all might recall that during the budget deliberations, many of the fees were modified slightly, but those revenues went directly back to the department, for example, keeping the Northeast Animal Shelter open. So these fees are collected for the purposes of providing services within the Animal Services Department.
Yeah, and I think the concern is, if we didn't have these fees, we'd be back in the discussion of cutting resources beyond what we've done already. And I think the fact that they're cost recovery, we're not charging more than it costs us to do the service, and so therefore, we're keeping, we're maintaining a level of service, although we'd all like to have more service, we certainly would have, love to have lower fees, except there's a need for us to fill that void of the cost of the service in order to maintain the budget. We had that major discussion in the budget regarding keeping one of our Animal Services facilities open, and I believe we decided to keep it open for, is it six months or a year?
I believe a full year.
Full year, I think.
For a full year.
Yes.
But without fees like this, we could not have done that.
That's correct.
So I would hope that we could move forward on this, and also the fact that this is already programmed in the budget, for every month that we do not pass this ordinance, that's less money to be spent during the fiscal year. All right, for every month we do not pass this ordinance, we have less money to spend in the general fund and to keep the department solvent. And so I'd ask that we get a unanimous vote so we can move this to go forward, and we can forthwith it, and so we can start collecting these fees.
Thank you, Mr. Parks completes the speakers on the queue. That matters now before it's for a vote. Ms. Hahn, smile. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen, eyes.
Very well, thank you. All right, now, Mr. Clerk, we have three, five, six, and eighteen. Those are ordinances. If we can take those items, and number three, we have Mr. Walsh. Number three, Mr. Walsh. So we're on number three, colleagues.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. Good news, I'm leaving the meeting to do a post on Hollywood Highlands this afternoon. Noise variance. We should have a permit for noise variance of five to fifteen thousand dollars. Try living at Yucca and Argyle, two blocks from the W Hotel. Little Ricky over here allows them, they blow me out of my bed. They blow everyone out of our bed. We've got Hollywood Palace, we have the W Hotel, it's party, it's have sex, but incidentally, it's politically correct sex in the street, it's both gay and straight. And of course, while they're having sex under my window, they're boogying to the music two blocks away at the W Hotel. It's out of control, the city, Hollywood is Holly weird, it used to be Hollywood, now it's Alka Hollywood. Every single person, we have dogs walking around that have liquor licenses. If, everybody has a liquor license in Hollywood. The bums have a lic, homeless people have liquor licenses. The bums have a lic, homeless people have liquor licenses. I mean, they're, and this is Little Ricky's, let it be known, we have more liquor licenses per square mile than anyplace on the planet Earth.
Mr. President, I don't think he's talking about the noise variance.
Yes, I am, because it's, noise and liquor are the same thing.
No, Mr. Walsh, noise and liquor are not the same.
By saying, I don't know, maybe he's, he's under the influence. I'd just like to finish by saying HollywoodHighlands.org, and I've just been told that it's perhaps a second teacher has committed suicide of LAUSD teacher because of the LA Times putting our, our value added on, on their website. Thank you, and LA Times abajo.
All right, that is our only speaker on that matter. So on that, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very well, thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next item, we have a number of cards on five, so let's go to number six. And on number six, we have one card.
Mr. President, item six was called special. One of the council members had questions for that matter. We have now been informed that her questions have been answered.
There always is a public hearing on number six?
That is correct, sir.
All right, so there will always be a public hearing. So on number, we're going to bring five back. I'm trying to get through the other items. Ms. Hahn?
Colleagues, six is about roosters in our city, and we are allowing each household to have one rooster after we heard about noise and we heard from LAPD about the connection between roosters and cockfighting and gang violence. So we have been, up to this point, only allowed Animal Services, the authority, to enforce the one-rooster-per-household rule. What we're doing today is we're allowing Building and Safety and LAPD to enforce the rooster rule. So that's what we're doing here today.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Just a quick comment. It's just kind of ironic I have my chicken tie on today. People just need to know that you don't need a rooster to get eggs. There's a tremendous interest in doing your own chickens in your backyard these days. In Westchester, there was a tour of some of the chicken areas and chicken coops, and I recommend everybody have a few hens if you can do it. Feed them fresh greens and move forward with it. But you don't need a rooster, just so you know. A rooster is necessary for fertilizing the egg, not laying the egg. So obviously, the problem with a rooster in an urban environment is that people who don't like the sound have a real problem with it. I personally have no problem with it, but other people do, so we obviously need to move forward with that.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Hahn? You're up again. Okay. So let's take the vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very well, forthwith on that matter. And Mr. Garcetti, you want number five brought forward?
Please.
So we would do that. We have a number of cards on number five.
I know we had a public hearing. We could reopen and have a minute per speaker.
All right, minute per speaker. Lori Goldman.
Morning, Council. I'm here representing Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council. As the first certified neighborhood council in Hollywood, we wish to express our support of the ban on supergraphics in Hollywood. Primary considerations are, supergraphics have resulted in a visual blight in our community. The lack of enforcement has resulted in a proliferation of supergraphics. And the economic argument put forth by the development community does not justify the continued visual degradation of our community. We do believe that of the 48 approved supergraphics, that we still can keep our Hollywood uniqueness, our vibrancy, and our vitality. Council members, CHNC respectfully requests that you join with us and support the ban on supergraphics.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gubler? Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. Ronan? Good morning.
Good morning, City Council members. The Hollywood Chamber of Commerce continues to have serious reservations about the proposal before you today. This banning of supergraphics represents a significant change in policy. And such an abrupt change may have serious consequences to projects in the pipeline that were counting on supergraphics to make their projects pencil out. Developers of the proposed 400-room hotel next to the Hollywood Palladium and the 320-room Highland Center Hotel have told us that this action could effectively kill these projects. An abrupt change like this, to be fair, should be phased in to allow those impacted to adapt. Otherwise, the city may also lose out in the end if important projects are canceled. We still believe that the well-reasoned and more gradual approach to capping supergraphics that was advocated by the Planning Commission makes sense, and we urge you to reconsider and adopt their recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Hathaway. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you. Dennis Hathaway, Coalition to Ban Billboard Blight. We support the ban on supergraphics. Unfortunately, this ordinance is taking one step forward with that ban and taking one step backwards by allowing digital signs up to 300 square feet on walls of buildings. The other issue is that I don't think it's been thoroughly explained to the public what this grandfathering means. My own calculations showed that there would be over 30,000 square feet of new supergraphics that are not up now that would be grandfathered, including supergraphics that would be covering windows, very close to freeways. I think that I would urge the City Council to make sure from the city attorney exactly what legal, what projects have legal vested rights and not allow any other projects to go forward with supervarics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm representing the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council. We think it's very important to have public notice, and one way to do that is to follow the Planning Commission's recommendation, which would allow them to review and act upon all signs. We continue our objection, we continue to support a ban on supergraphics. I would like to read from our community impact statement which you got today, and that is that if an entity erects different signings than permitted, then the permitted permit should be revoked and the entity in signings should be deemed illegal and subject to appropriate fines and penalties. We also support the sign reduction program, which unfortunately is being eliminated by the proposal before you. In past CIS, we're in favor of very strong enforcement. That means well-funded. Thank you to the Council, the CPC, and staff for some very good work on this subject.
Thank you, sir. Brian Curran?
Yes, Brian Curran, Vice President, Hollywood Heritage. Hollywood Heritage enthusiastically supports Council President Garcetti's proposed ban on supergraphics in Hollywood. For too long, lax and inconsistent enforcement has led to the damaging of fragile historic buildings and the obscuring of the beauty of their designs. Supergraphics are inappropriate for application on historic structures and in general are illegal and create visual blight within the Hollywood Boulevard Commercial and Entertainment National Historic District. We urge the City Council to join Council President Garcetti and the residents of Hollywood in working to improve the visual quality of Hollywood and to protect its vital historic resources by rejecting the recommendations of the CPC and approving the ban in its original form as amended by the Council's Plumb Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Ann Williams with the Central City Association. I'm here on behalf of our membership, as well as VICA and the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, to oppose a prohibition on supergraphics in the Hollywood signage SUD. We feel that such a prohibition would undermine the very purpose of the district. We understand that supergraphics are not appropriate in all parts of the city, but Hollywood has been specifically designated as a place where this kind of large-scale advertising actually enhances the urban environment. And a prohibition on supergraphics in Hollywood in the signage SUD sets a dangerous precedent for future development across the city. Particularly in the context, context of this ravaged real estate market, it's critically important that projects have access to as many income streams as possible, but perhaps more important, it's crucial that the city not send the message that it changes the rules on businesses. As you know, real estate projects typically unfold over the course of many years, so the element of certainty is crucial to attracting investment to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica Perez.
Good morning, Council members. I'm Veronica Perez with the law firm of Holland and Knight. I represent the California Sign Association. We've been working closely with a coalition of business interests on issues relating to onsite signs, business signs. And we'd like to thank the Council President, his staff, and the Planning Department for working with us to address our concerns relating to onsite electronic signs, and we are supportive of those provisions here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our final speaker on this matter, David Curry.
My name is David Carrera, and I'm here to support the ban on supergraphics. I live in Hollywood and have been here for 20 years, and I'm right outside the sign district, about 150 feet away, so me and my neighborhood are extremely vulnerable to the future of supergraphics. In the past, large buildings have been rapped on all four sides. It's been annoying and damaging to my property and values and rentals, and then about a year and a half ago, they started lighting them up. So not only did I have to deal with it during the day, but at night, my yard was lit, shafts of light coming in my house. I felt like I was being X-rated in my own home. And, you know, I was in Beverly Hills the other day, and they don't seem to be having this problem. And it's a pretty nice place. And I was going to end this with a sort of a quip comparing what do we want to be, Beverly Hills or the city of Bell? But I've never seen Bell. And I started thinking, what is the worst place I've ever seen in regards to signage? And it's Hollywood. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you. Just to pick up where you left off, I think Bell doesn't have supergraphics. They've got a lot of other things going wrong for them, but it's one of the few positive things we can say publicly these days about Bell. Thank you to all members of the public who are here. I mean, everybody who spoke truly has been a great friend and collaborator on so many different things, and while I know a majority of folks are testifying in support of one element of what we're voting on here today having to do with supergraphics, appreciate everybody. I mean, with the Chamber of Commerce, of hundreds of things we've worked on, there's probably only been one or two in nine years where we've seen a little bit differently. And I think on 95% of what's before us, thank you for your support on that, and we can respectfully disagree on the supergraphics piece. I also want to address something that Dennis Hathaway brought up. So before I kind of do that, though, and ask some city staff to come forward on the details, because I want to make sure I'm comfortable with those details too today as we move forward, let me just say a couple of general things. And also thank Mr. Labange, who's been a great partner in Hollywood for not only cleaning up Hollywood, helping develop it in the right way, but also making sure that it's an investment-friendly place. We can all sit around and say, we want a beautiful place that becomes completely vacant and nobody's there except for criminals. Certainly, we had some lean years in Hollywood where that was the case. I think there have been really dynamic developments that have helped bring about things. Some look better than others, but bottom line, it's a very revitalized neighborhood from where anybody saw it 10 years ago. But for one element that has generated a lot of conversation, I want to first just say a couple of other things that this does. One, the old ordinance for the Hollywood SUD allowed temporary signage to be up. It was well-intended, I think. It was about having entertainment-based things like a movie premiere, so you want to have a sign that says that movie is premiering. But it was used increasingly until somebody on one building on a historic structure actually took an illegal supergraphic, put it up for, I think it was an H&amp;M ad, because it had a celebrity in it, and that was seen as entertainment because there was a celebrity in her bra on the Hollywood Roosevelt, which is certainly not how I think of the Hollywood Roosevelt, at least not the facade. When we think about what we want to have in a neighborhood that will have a good combination of a dynamic place for people to visit, we have not been Puritans in Hollywood. Indeed, Hollywood is one of the most dynamic places where people do come to see the lights, to see the action, whether it's the Jimmy Kimmel Show, whether it's Madame Tussauds. We just saw a sneak preview of the new Cirque du Soleil show that's going to be coming. It's pre-sold tens of thousands of tickets, tens of thousands of tickets, and I'm confident the number of jobs and hotel stays are going to be incredible when we see that it was debuted, its new name, that show Iris. But we also wanted to close some other loopholes and make sure that a lot of folks saw the Hollywood sign district as a place that opened up signage, when in reality, it was actually more restrictive in many ways than other parts of the city. For instance, onsite signage, which is the signs that say what sort of business this is or what they sell, there's a lower ratio because of all the historic structures we have in Hollywood protecting those buildings, whereas if you go other places in the city, you can have bigger signs that says what kind of store it is or what kind of an entity it is. And these are, I think, some good examples of what has worked. In general, with supergraphics, though, I think I respectfully request that on that piece, we not move forward with the ban, sorry, that we do move forward the ban of new supergraphics along with my recommendations, and request to make the motion to move that part of the ordinance along with the findings, that the Planning Department has prepared, as well as the secret determination to adopt this ordinance. I do thank the Planning Department for the time that they've spent, but enough is enough. It's not that there won't be any more that we see come up. Indeed, we saw it's only fair, when you draw the line, you not catch people midstream who have made calculations on whether or not their project will be a successful one, whether they'll get the financing based on some of those things. But I appreciate some of the new projects that Mr. Gubler brought up, and I've had very good conversations with those folks, almost all of them who are coming now not asking for signage, which is nice. Once you permit signage everywhere, all it does is inflate the value of the real estate. It just adjusts right back up. We have to draw the line now in a way that people can predict, make their business decisions, and the land price will adjust accordingly as well. And right now, Hollywood has really been one of the few places, if not the only neighborhood, where we're still seeing groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings in the city of a large scale. That has been something positive for all of Los Angeles, to see that sort of revenue coming here, too. But I'd like to ask if the City Planning Department and maybe city attorney can come forward, because I think the issues that were discussed are legitimate ones that were brought up by the, and just to be clear, on the digital signs, the 2003 rules have not changed. In fact, they might be more restrictive now? Is that correct?
That's correct. This is Blake Lamb with the Planning Department. The current 2003 regulations for the sign district, providing the regulations for digital signage, which actually are more strict than exist citywide. It's actually because of the regulations within the sign district today that the city has been able to prevent the digital conversion of billboards within the sign district. If you look at the digital conversion of billboards in Hollywood, they've all located outside of the sign district boundaries.
So we have a citywide ban right now on digital billboards. How does this affect, does this supersede that? Would this be, would there be a scenario in which, under this ban, somehow this is the only place where they're legalized and they're pushed into Hollywood? Would that be the unintended consequence that could come out of this? And if not, how are we protected? Because that's certainly, I think, the impression of some friends who, you know, are as concerned with these issues as I am have brought up here today.
Absolutely not. The digital conversion of billboards has never been permitted within the Hollywood sign district boundaries, and this ordinance would not provide an unintended consequence for that to happen. And perhaps the city attorney would like to give us some legal background on that.
Yeah, yes, I can't fault for city attorney's office. I would agree with that. And where there's, where there is uncertainty, we still have the citywide ban on digital signs. Okay, and that, and that takes precedence? Okay. Well, if it's not regulated by this SUD. Sure, okay. But within that SUD, it wouldn't, the citywide ban wouldn't be, would it be null and void in Hollywood? No, I don't believe so. Okay. All right, that's very important, because I don't want to take a step backwards on digital signs. I think we've done some positive things recently on those. Appreciate what Dennis brought up, but I wanted to establish that for the record. I was asked that by a reporter as well. Does this mean all of a sudden there's a loophole? And I said, if there's a loophole, I want to make sure it's closed. If there's not a loophole, I want to staff this out on the public record, so. And this is a living, breathing ordinance if we see something happen. So it still relies on the discretion of a new sign agreement if a, if a digital board, when there was no longer a ban, would come up. And I think it's, it's very carefully regulated where it's the main strip of Hollywood Boulevard, it's about five blocks on Vine Street, about five blocks on Sunset, and a few, and two blocks on Coenga.
That's correct.
Okay. So, you know, for those who are worried the sky is falling, I would say the sky is not going to fall. We are going to see Hollywood development through. We are going to make sure that people who are investing in Hollywood have an amazing place to come to, that they can make sure that their projects can get the financing that is critical to continue putting people to work and making Hollywood a dynamic place to be. You know, I would point to some of the openings we've had recently, and they've gone through tough times, but we had New Boutique Hotel open up on Vine Street, less than half a block away from the W. There are two other hotels that are charging ahead now and already are financed. An office structure that we're resolving, the issue as you've heard about around here with a hamburger stand, an adjust way for that hamburger stand owner, and so that should move forward. New parking that's already underway being built where the farmer's market is. These are projects that it's tough to find that collection of projects anywhere in the city right now, and that's not just good for Hollywood, it's good for all of us. But it's time that we got our visual blight back. This doesn't stop anything new from popping up since summer in the hopper, but what it does is it draws the line and says from that point forward, until we get to a place where we decide that it's a changed universe, let's make sure that we do this the right way, and not a way that is overwhelming with the visual clutter, one that is still a dynamic entertainment district, but one in which we can hold our heads high. And I think the residents and the businesses deserve nothing less, so I ask you for your support today.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I rise and ask for your support for this, and I want to thank President Garcetti for his work since 2007 to address the proliferation of supergraphics in the Hollywood signage district, which includes my council district and the Fifth. It's time for us to recognize, while the district was adopted for a lot of good reasons, and many aspects are working well, the super graphics piece of this is not working well. Buildings are being designed not for residents or businesses, but as a place to plaster these giant signs onto. And we've learned a lot from the years that this district has been in place, and it's time to make these changes. Super graphics are not only overpowering the architecture of Hollywood, they compete with roof and neon signs that were a key reason behind the creation of the Sign District in the first place. This district is about encouraging reinvestment in Hollywood, but also allowing the old Hollywood, including those iconic roof signs, to come back to life in a new form. Advertisers and developers have made tons of money from these super graphics. It's not unreasonable now to try and rein them in. And we should make it clear, we're not banning, we're only banning new ones. We're not banning those that have been permitted. We're not banning those that are in the process. And I think this is a relatively modest compromise step, and I ask for your support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carricks. That is now before us for a vote, colleagues. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Fourth, please.
Fourth with on that, Mr. Clerk. Next item, please.
That brings us to item number 18, called Special for Cards.
Number 18, colleagues. Mr. Walsh. Number 18, Mr. Walsh. Is Mr. Walsh still in chambers? Mr. Walsh, second call. Mr. Walsh not here. Let's go to the Valley. Marion Voger and Donna Piriman. Ladies to the San Fernando Valley.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, almost. But finally, the veterans, you know, they, they have been short-changed for a long time. Let me tell you, folks, these are the backbone of fighting for our freedom here. We're trying to stop, we want to stop communism trying to take over our country. So we need to have all these benefits and all the stuff here. And my dad, he's one of them from World War II. U.S. Navy First Machinist Mate. He was in the South Pacific, and let me tell you, he's taking advantage of it, having a new state-of-the-art hearing aid for, for hearing, hard to hear. I guess it's from the machines that he used to have on the, when he was on the battleship. Even though, are you familiar with that, Eric Garcetti? So, you know, this is so important for these guys, gals, guys and gals to have this. And by the way, Rosendahl, I don't care if you're, you know, if you're gay, if you're in the military, just that, you know, I just want everybody to know that we support them all, and I, hopefully, that, you know, that the veterans' hospitals and all that stay public. I want them to get the best of care, because these people are in harm's way, and they need the best of care. And I don't want their benefits cut. Thank you.
Donna Piriman.
Also want to say.
In the Valley, Donna Piriman.
Yeah, good morning. Anyway, you never call me on one, but anyway, they, I believe the veterans deserve all the benefits they can have. They give up their lives and they get disabled or troubled by the war, and they give so much. So I say that I want to get, I think they should get the best of care, and I think this is a great thing. Every once in a while, you do have something good on your agenda, and this is one of them. So let's say thank you for our veterans, and let's give them all they need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl.
Just a quick comment, and I appreciate her saying that she didn't care if I was gay or not, but I am a veteran. The truth of the matter is, we got to support our veterans. I was just with a group that are in Iraq and Afghan who are in my district in a transition house, and we sat at a block party, and we talked about commitments to our great nation. Obviously, anything we can do for a veteran that's put themselves in harm's way, we should do. Thank you, Ms. Zine, for your leadership on this, and obviously, I ask for an eye vote. Thank you.
Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion is an important recognition of the fact that so many of our city employees sacrifice for their country by volunteering for the reserves and, and so often being called into, into active duty and often into harm's way. In this case, many of our city employees were faced with being called into active duty to respond to one of the worst offshore oil drilling disasters in history, when the BP well in the Gulf of Mexico exploded. And so what this motion does is two things. First, it recognizes those who sacrifice by volunteering for our reserves and provides full salaries for them for the time that they were called into active duty. But second, and very importantly, it puts the responsibility for that cost on the company that was responsible for that disaster, and it ensures that the city attorney will recover all of those costs from BP and, and those other firms that will be found accountable for that, that tragedy in the Gulf.
Thank you, Mr. Kokorian. Matters now before us, colleagues. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, we now have, Ms. Hahn has items, and Mr. Labange has items. Mr. Labange, how?
Members, if I just ask, this is a Rule 23. The city attorney approves it. A brief report from the Department of Water and Power. Yesterday was the hottest day in the city's history, and I'd like to get just an update from Water and Power. Very brief.
He wants to do that right now, man. Ms. Hahn.
It's a special because it's just heard, because yesterday was the hottest day.
I want to hear it too, but there's some items that people have been waiting for. Would it be all right to just go through some of those and then?
Okay, I just wanted to get this team back to Water and Power. I'll acquiesce to you, unless it's brief, I just wanted a brief report. If no one has any questions, we just get a brief report, and we can do follow-up later.
Ms. Hahn, I know you have folks here. Mr. Labange, can you do it in five, 10 minutes?
Absolutely. I'm not going to ask any questions, I just want to report.
All right. If we can do that in five to 10 minutes, then we can move on the agenda.
Just let us know that we have people in the audience that always come and always wait a long time. We can certainly have respect for our city employees, but there's certainly people here in the audience that have been waiting a long time. We just took 18 out of order, so I'm just saying.
I appreciate that. I appreciate everybody being here, but these are executives from Water and Power going to give a brief report.
Hold on, Mr. Labange.
The city attorney has to say something.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm sorry. Since the posting of today's agenda, in fact, yesterday, a record-setting heat wave enveloped the city, causing power outages in certain areas of the city. Immediate action is required in order to have D W P report on and assure the public of the delivery of vital services to city residents. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Very well. On the item, the findings.
Oh, no, no.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Very well.
Mr. Moon, please give us a brief report. Thank you. Marvin Moon, D W P.
Thank you. Marvin Moon, Director of Engineering. Yesterday, of course, with the record heat wave, we had a record load on the city. It reached 6,177 megawatts at 3:45 in the afternoon. This edged out the previous record on July 24th of 6165. Of course, with this high heat wave, in the wake of the highest recorded heat day, there are associated outages. We currently have 15,000 of our 1.4 million electric customers without power as of eight o'clock today. Specifically, there are four circuit outages affecting about 4,400 customers in the community of Brentwood and Mar Vista. There are 15 partial circuit outages affecting about 5,900 customers in the community of Brentwood, North Hollywood, Hollywood, Park La Brea, Los Feliz, and Canoga Park. Additionally, we had a transformer failure that was on the media over in the San Diego Bixil in Wilshire that affected 18 other large customers. And as of today, as of now, we have all but four of those back in service. We currently have over 100 crews handling the storm response, and we, the department is urging customers to conserve power in a manner that is safe for them. Additionally, the department is putting out updates to the community and the media and the council offices every three to four hours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. In addition, I want to let you know, members, Recreation and Parks has opened six cooling centers throughout the city, and this will be distributed for all of you to know, and ask that your field deputies become aware of this so we can assist it any way possible.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Yes, we had 113 degrees yesterday in downtown Los Angeles. We broke all records since we've been keeping temperatures. It was unbelievable. And certainly, I was listening throughout the day to the power outages, both with D W P. Edison also had their share of power outages, and we need to encourage people to check on their neighbors, check on those who certainly are elderly or have illnesses. We need to watch out for each other during this. Unfortunately, there was a hiker that was found dead in Griffith Park, and the heat might have contributed to that. One of the things that I was very concerned about, colleagues, was whether or not we go forward with our turning off of service due to non-payment during a heat wave. And I had a couple of calls yesterday from people who had gotten notices of turnoff, and I am very concerned, and so I called D W P to request that certainly we suspend all turnoffs of power for non-payment. I think we need to be extremely sensitive during these kinds of heat waves, even for non-payment. You don't want people to lose their power for fans and air conditioning, because we turned it off. The involuntary power outages, we're working to make sure those don't happen, and we try to correct them as quickly as they do. But I was very concerned that the department would be going out and shutting off people's power. I was assured yesterday that we will not turn off people's power for non-payment during this heat wave. Is that correct?
I'll have to take that one back, Councilman, on that one. I would take that.
No. Well, it should be correct.
Okay. I'll take your word for it.
We're saying here today, we do not want D W P to turn off people's power for non-payment during a heat wave. Hopefully, that is already our policy.
Wendy Anzian, yes, for this particular issue right now today, yes, that is correct. We won't shut off.
Absolutely. I say if the, if the temperature gets above, you know, even 90 degrees, hopefully, we will suspend our turnoffs of people's power. That could be, it could have a deadly consequence, and we don't want that.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I wanted to raise a couple of issues, and then if it's necessary, what I'll, I'll do is draft a motion to have this come into council. Now, it's my understanding that yesterday's power outage, at least in the Los Feliz area and possibly Silver Lake, may be related to the explosion of a vault at Wilshire and Bixil. Is that correct?
Dan Deppa here, Director of Power Transmission and Distribution. Councilwoman, no, that does not appear to be correct.
Okay, so you do, you don't know yet what the, was there an explosion at the vault at Wilshire and Bixil yesterday?
Yes, there was. There was a catastrophic transformer failure at that location.
Can you say it into the mic? I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Pardon me, Councilman. Yes, there was an explosion. We had a catastrophic transformer failure at that location, but that should not have affected the communities that you were referring to.
But did it affect other communities?
It affected the immediate area, the downtown area, the Wilshire area and whatnot. Initially, after the explosion, we had 18 very large buildings out in that immediate area. However, as of a little while ago, that was down to only four buildings left that were still out, and those buildings should be restored within about four hours.
And that was in what radius, how much of a radius of the vault itself, within what, maybe a mile or?
Probably within a three or four mile radius of that, of that vault at a maximum. It's not all the buildings that are in that area. It's only a few scattered buildings within there that are still out, those four buildings.
Okay. Well, I seconded Mr. Labange's motion, but it's something I, the reason I'd like to dig into this a bit further, and I'll do a motion to have it come to committee, because I recall that this happened on two occasions, when Mr. Deaton was running the Department of Water and Power. It happened with vaults, and I'm not sure if they were explosions or what the details were, because it was quite a few years ago now. But I, I'm wondering if there's some protocol, different protocol, we might need to develop to monitor those situations. And those situations, I don't think they were related to heat, but I, I just need to go back and take another look and see if there's any commonalities here. So I'll go ahead and do the motion and see what we can find. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Thank you, Mr. Labange.
I thank you, Water and Power. Also want to remind you, we're going to circulate a message from the Recreation and Parks, which is providing its role of informing the city about its cooling centers and tips on what to do at excessive heat. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This will be a note in file, colleagues. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
That would bring us to item number nine, called Special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, number nine. And thank you, Mr. Labange. We did that in about five minutes, so very nice. Ms. Hahn, number nine.
Thank you, colleagues. This is a very interesting thing that we're doing here. This motion, that hopefully will get your approval, is to donate the historic St. Peter's Church, which is currently owned by the city's Department of Recreation and Parks, and it's located at Harborview Memorial Cemetery in San Pedro. And this was a church that was actually donated to the city in 1956 under John Gibson. Why in the world the city would have accepted a church, I don't know. Hopefully, we won't ever do this again in the future. It was placed in a cemetery, a very historic cemetery in San Pedro, but like many things in the city, it fell on terrific disrepair. The city is not in the business of keeping up churches, clearly. It was vandalized, and really, the, the beautiful church was in a place, not being taken care of. And when Green Hills Memorial Park heard about the plight of St. Peter's Church, they actually said, hey, we would like to take this church off your hands. We will have it moved from the cemetery to the Green Hills Memorial Park on Western Avenue in San Pedro. We will restore it to its former condition. They will maintain it in accordance with the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. So they agreed, they thought it would be perfect to move to Green Hills. They're going to actually use it for smaller funeral services. We can have a church that now is going to be taken care of with love and care, and it's a, it's a win-win solution. You can imagine how complicated this has been with the city attorney's office in terms of making sure that all the dots were dotted and the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted. We finally have come to today, we've got all the documents in place. Once we pass this resolution today to declare it surplus and donate it, then Green Hills will sign the documents. And the next step is that it goes before the Cultural Heritage Commission, and they're already very aware of this, and they like the agreement as well. And then it will be quite a spectacle when we actually move this church along streets in San Pedro. We're trying to find right now the route that is least disruptive to D W P power lines, but D W P is working with us to identify this route. And I want to thank Green Hills Memorial Park for having the vision, even though this has turned out to be extremely complicated, to want to rescue this church and give it a final resting place at Green Hills Memorial Park. Want to thank the city attorney for all this work that you've done. I know you were always trying to protect us against any future problems, so hopefully today with this vote, we will rescue this church, we will give it a final resting place. It will be restored and given the attention and care it deserves. And people forever will be able to go to Green Hills Memorial Park, see this church, and use it in a way that is, gives it great respect and dignity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. The matter's before us for a vote. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item, please.
Item number 13, called Special by Councilmember Hahn.
Oh, me again.
Ms. Hahn, Dr. Williams on this matter. Number 13, Dr. Williams.
And then I'd like to have city staff come, too.
All right. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Bear Road, El Sereno, also a member of Sierra Club Water Committee. This particular project, it went through the environmental process, kind of. In the final E I R, it said it adopted all feasible mitigation. The mitigation was only in the final E I R, not as part of the draft E I R that was circulated. Many of the conditions within the mitigation program says would be, that is, they haven't been. They recognize the significant impacts. Yes, there are significant impacts, but they balance them against the benefits versus the impacts. The preferred project maximizes the available funding sources, so it's really about the money. They don't want to mitigate many of the impacts, and they do not consider it worthwhile. Funding, funding, follow the money. It's a $118 million project right now.
$117.
The operations and maintenance of this $118 million project will cost $12 million a year based upon Bureau of Sanitation's own operations and maintenance budgets. So this is another proper project that is taking us down the bane in the way of is another Prop O project that is taking us down the bane in the way of the storm water system. It's not related. The cumulative impacts do not explore how this works with the rest of the 2020 Storm Burnage Plan, and would like to have it held back. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. Colleagues, this is a Prop O-related project. This is, as Dr. Williams said, a $117 million project. And, you know, I always want to take the opportunity to thank Councilwoman Perry, Councilwoman Garcetti, who really led the effort to pass Prop O in 2004. And I always want to thank the voters of Los Angeles for Green to vote for Proposition 4, which gave us over $500 million in bond money to really clean our waters, lakes and streams, and keep polluted waters from running into other bodies of water. This is what this project is. This is the Wilmington Drain and Lake Machado, which, as you all remember, was the home of Reggie. Now, lately, I understand that it's the home of non-native snakes which are overrunning that lake. But this is a great project. It'll clean up Wilmington Drain. It'll clean up Lake Machado. It will restore it to a wonderful recreational treasure, really for all of Southern California. My question is, voters approved this in 2004. It's now 2010. We're just approving the EIR. Tell me why it's taken so long. Tell me when we can begin spending this money. Tell me when work will begin on the Wilmington Drain and Lake Machado.
Thank you, Councilmember Hahn. My name is Kendrick Okuda with the Bureau of Engineering Propositional Program. Thank you for those kind words on Prop O. We are pleased to report that Proposition 0 is making progress. We currently have eight projects in construction, and eight projects have been completed. And with that, I'll introduce your staff who will answer your questions specifically on the Machado Lake project.
Why is this one taking so long?
My name is Alfred Mata. I'm with the Bureau of Engineering. I'm the project manager on the project. Well, we, once this project was adopted, the council met, the Proposition 0 was adopted, was passed in 2004. This project was funded, I believe, at the beginning of 2007, and then we initiated work following that approval of funding for this specific project. And we started with the studies that are leading up us to this day. We've done a long pre-design phase. There's a lot of studies that we looked at to capture all the information so that we could make the park, the project that you were describing. And we've issued the draft EIR earlier this year, and we finalized it and we brought it to council as quickly as we can. We're currently in the design stage right now. We'll be wrapping up the design of the Wilmington Drain portion of the project later this year, and be in construction in the spring of next year. And for the Machado Lake project, we'll be wrapping up design next year, about fall of next year. It's about two and a half year construction timeframe, and that'll wrap up construction in the summer of 2014.
Is there any way we can move up this schedule?
We're trying to do all we can to expedite it, certainly.
I think we need to move this schedule up. And I understand staffing. I understand studies and plans. But I think the voters, you know, when they approved something in 2004, and by the way, Lake Machado was the poster child for Prop O, along with Cabrillo Beach, in terms of a very visual, visible, you know, entity that people could say, oh, if I vote for this, this is the kind of project that's going to be implemented. The fact that from 2004 to 2014, you know, 10 years to accomplish that is really, I think, way too long. And I think, you know, we will always go back to the voters to ask for help. We will always put something before the voters to ask them, would they consider taxing themselves or approving, you know, loans in the form of bonds for other projects? And they're going to be less willing, I think, to approve it if we take 10 years to accomplish a project. 2014 is too, is really far away to complete Lake Machado. I'm hoping that you can speed that up, make that a lot quicker. Really, if there's anything I can do to help that, we really need to get this money spent. We need to create the jobs. And ultimately, we need to restore these kinds of bodies of lake, lakes, to, you know, their previous condition, which is what people want. That's, I know what I want. I know that's what the environmental community wants. Again, this will create jobs. This is like our honorable economic stimulus package. Let's spend this money. Let's move the schedule up if at all possible. You know, I think you need all hands on deck, 24/7. Let's get these projects completed.
We will look into seeing what we can do to further expedite the schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. The matter's before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item, please.
That brings us to item 14, called "Special by Ms. Hahn." There is an amended motion that has been circulated for that 14A.
On number 14, there was a public hearing. We do have people in the audience. Scott Wellman. Mr. Wellman, you here?
I am.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Actually, before he starts, this is just... Thank you. This, my comments...
Hold on. Mr. City Attorney.
Councilmembers, a fair hearing matter requiring that councilmembers heighten attention to the speaker at the podium or to your monitors at your desks.
Very well. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. My comments really are directed towards the city attorney. We do agree that there's a problem, that it needs to be cleaned up. However, and we do agree with 20 of the 22 conditions, and we do agree with what the Plum Committee had proposed. We don't agree with this amendment. It's tantamount to a closing of this market. And as the city attorney knows, a closing cannot be done. It's considered a taking, and there may be substantial liability on behalf of the city for taking or for imposing these conditions. There also is no nexus between the so-called crime at night, night hours that the condition addresses. In fact, only 6% of incidents occurred after 8 o'clock at night. I'm also concerned about the liability to the city because what they are doing is imposing on the property owner a unique police function of policing the public area around the store and causing the property owner to pay for it. The liability to both the property owner and the city, if someone gets hurt, could be substantial. I think the city should look at that. We had a big public hearing on this. We had 60 people in support of this market that has been open for over 40 years. It is their community market. These conditions are tantamount to closing it down. We are willing to work with the Watts Gang Task Force. We are willing to work with the police department. We had a meeting yesterday. We would ask the opportunity to keep it open and to work with these on a weekly basis to clean this issue up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Noel Weiss.
We've got a minute, two. Okay. Council members, this is an opportunity to empower the Watts Gang Task Force and the Neighborhood Council. We're in a situation, you got to, unfortunately, where the planning department, the planner assigned to this is no longer with the department. Mr. Landini is just a fill-in. They don't even know where the file is. The landlord, the person who owns the property, is here today for the first time. We need to make, we're in a position where we need to make the community responsible in part for the solution of this problem. Whatever the nuisance abatement conditions, fine. All I'm advocating for is the addition of a requirement that the market owner and the property owner meet every week with the Watts Gang Task Force to report to the task force what is going on, how they're going to basically solve this problem, be responsive to the community. That's going to empower the task force in terms of turning this problem from a negative into a positive. Likewise, the Watts Neighborhood Council, they meet once a month. There's no reason why the Neighborhood Council can't, in this situation, be positioned to be able to get a feeling like they can have a stake. And what we're, basically what we're talking about is a contract with the community. If you rely on the same old, same old, where you're talking about a top-down situation where the planning department may or may not be able to enforce this, building and safety may or may not be able to enforce this, we're going to go nowhere fast in the long run. The bottom line is to try to get this thing controlled, get the nuisance abated. I would advocate, again, for the inclusion of a condition that basically says they meet as a mitigation, they meet every week, because this is, the Watts Gang Task Force is probably the most unique entity in this city. And there's no reason why it can't be put to use in a proactive, positive way. The LAPD doesn't have a problem with it. The community doesn't have a problem with it. The landlord doesn't have a problem with it. The owner of the market doesn't have a problem with it. If nobody has a problem with it, what's the downside? None. I think we ought to give it a shot. Thank you.
Noreen McLendon.
Good day. My name's Noreen McLendon. I'm the Executive Director of Concerned Citizens of South Central Los Angeles, and I'm also the Vice President of the Watts Gang Task Force. At the Plum hearing, I proposed a compromise, that the condition, I don't know whether it was four or five, which was the security guard be left in place and that the hours be extended. That has been a week ago. To date, the property, the market owner has not put in place the security guard, has, did in fact send the manager to the Watts Gang Task Force suggesting that they not have the security guard and that they can't afford the security guard. In my estimation, the community did their part. You had 60 people come out to that hearing. You also had, since then, I've driven by at different times of the day. The community's not hanging out in front of the store. The community's doing their part to assist. To get 60 people to come at $5 apiece to testify on your behalf, $300. A security guard at $17 an hour, 12 hours a day, $365, $74,265. To get the community, law enforcement, and the political establishment to work on your behalf, priceless. And I think that this particular property owner and store owner has squandered that priceless effort. And I think that Councilmember Hahn is doing the right thing and suggesting that the conditions be imposed as they were put in place. I think the owner of the store is the only person who doesn't care what happens here, and I say that they should be closed at 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Arnie Corland.
That was pretty strong. That was pretty strong.
If you can see this, councilmembers, good morning. My name is Arnie Corland. I'm a rental property owner in the area. It's my day job. Amongst some of my extracurricular activities, I volunteer, as some of you know, around the city, teaching rental property owners how to control crime and nuisance issues on their properties. And I'll be glad to submit these for the record on some of what you see here. As I volunteer to do this around the city, this is one of the worst nuisance locations I have ever seen. I had offered a number of years ago both to the property owner and the business owner to help and mentor and teach them how to work with law enforcement and the community. And, well, you see in some of your packages up there, I have video here, pictures of an individual diving into that store after a drive-by shooting, an approximate 15-year-old checking himself for bullet wounds after drive-by shooting. You look last July, Eldon McNault walking through the front of that door. You'll see in the Los Angeles Times homicide report five minutes before he was killed. These are real time. This is one of the biggest blight and nuisance issues I've ever seen. The, as of today, the property owner, I'm sorry, the business owner did offer to work with us a little bit better. I would suggest, though, that the most stringent conditions be enforced and to be followed. There is graffiti on here that was put up last week after the last Plum hearing. It is still there. It is still not removed. And if any of you can see this, I don't know if you can, but it is one of the most blighted properties I've ever seen. So the most stringent conditions, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Humberto Nunez.
Hablas español?
Yeah.
Hablas español? En español. Bueno. ¿En español? Sí.
Yo compré esa propiedad en el 1900... Perdón. Yo soy Humberto Nunez.
My name is Humberto Nunez.
Y yo compré la propiedad...
I purchased the property?
En 1986.
In 1986.
Y este, yo sé que el área es mala.
I know that it is a bad area.
Pero en comparación antes está mejor.
But comparing to before, it is better now.
Yo sé que hay muchos problemas.
I know that there are quite a bit of problems.
Muchas crímenes.
A lot of crime.
Pero todos los crímenes pasan afuera de la tienda, no es la propiedad.
But the crime happens outside of the store, not inside the property.
Entonces, lo que queremos hacer es para ayudar a la comunidad de Watts, con los miembros de Watts, a ver si se puede mejorar esa área de ahí.
What we need to do in order to help the community of Watts is to try to improve the area.
Porque a veces la gente mala se hace buena.
Because sometimes bad people can change and become a good person.
Eso es mi idea.
That's my idea.
Y voy a tratar de estar en las juntas lo más que pueda.
I'm going to try to go to the meetings as much as possible.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Tingerides, Los Angeles Police Department.
Not either way.
Good afternoon. I'm Captain Tingerides. I'm the commanding officer at Southeast Station, the Dema Market.
Captain, would you like to come sit at the table? You're one of us.
Okay.
Sometimes.
No, he's not one of us, thank goodness. He's better than us. Protect, sir. Captain.
Thank you. I'm Captain Tingerides. I'm the commanding officer at Southeast Station. The Dema Market falls within Southeast Station. In 2006, May of 2006, we started the initial steps to do an abatement at that location because of the gang activity, narcotic activity, the loitering that was going on, and it was quite a blight to the community. In September of '07, it changed from Jordan's Market to Dema's Market. And in order to stop the abatement process, it was, the name was changed or the ownership was changed to a different member in the family.
Mmm.
The direction that we're trying to go now is through the planning, so that regardless of what happens with the business, it follows the property itself. The property continues to be a center for gang activity, a center for narcotic sales. There's been drive-by shootings there. There have been homicides there, I think two or three in the last year. I talked to one community member the other day who indicated that the liquor store at 109th and Wilmington had been cleaned up, and that was causing part of the problem because the folks that used to hang out and loiter there had moved up to this market. And that is true. That liquor store cooperated with us. We were able to clean it up significantly. The problem that we've had with Dema Market is a lack of cooperation with the owners of the business. We have tried over the last several years to get them in, to get them to the table. And when we had the zoning or the Plum hearing the other day, the two conditions that were challenged were the security guard and closing at 7 o'clock. And it was suggested that they be left open until 10 o'clock. We also discussed stopping sales of alcohol at 7 o'clock, but that's a whole different process, and we weren't able to do that. But I was, I was ready to try and work with them to leave it open until 10 o'clock, but that was under the condition of having an effective security guard and cooperation from the owner. Yesterday, the owner called a meeting with us, and a representative from planning, a representative from Councilmember Hahn's office, and myself were there. We waited for 45 minutes, and the owner of the business was a no-show. And so, you know, based on that continued pattern of not being there to work with us and cooperate with us, I am now suggesting or asking that all of the conditions be implemented. That will give us the opportunity to continue to work with them, hopefully motivate, and the ownership to work with us. Part of the conversation I had with them today was that they don't understand the process. Judging from the change in ownership, it would appear to me they do understand the process, but we are very willing to work with them today and tomorrow to show them what the process is. And the concern over costs, I understand, but I also understand that right now, people that actually spend money are afraid to go into that store. And if that store gets cleaned up, and we've seen this with other places where we've implemented these conditions and worked, the business increases, and they're able to afford that security. They're able to afford the changes without any problem.
Thank you, Captain. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you very much. Colleagues, this is a store in my district in Watts. And just to reiterate what Captain Tingerides has said, since 2004, LAPD and sheriffs have made at least 30 arrests at the property, most gang members selling drugs at the property. Drug transactions occur inside and outside the store in plain view of the manager. These sales have included crack, cocaine, marijuana, et cetera. Gang members have fled within the store to hide drugs. Sexual harassment. Women walking by the store have complained of inappropriate touching. Intimidation. The men occupying the storefront are imposing and participate in inappropriate... outside that turf attempting to patronize the market. There are repeated shootings occurring at this location. The building has several bullet holes in it. In separate incidents, a 13-year-old and a 15-year-old standing in front of the market were hit by drive-by gunfire. During a recent gun shooting, there were children within the store. Also, we're going to be locating a new charter school within two blocks away, Alliance Charter School. Public drinking, loitering, drug sales. This store has a rap sheet. And honestly, colleagues, at the Plum Committee meeting, and Councilmember Correia will speak to that, I think there was an attempt to work with them and to forge a compromise to allow the store to stay open till 10:00 p.m., if they agreed to hire a security guard, if they agreed to work with the community, like coming to the Watts Gang Task Force on weekly meetings. But I'm not in favor of that, and especially since the one meeting that we tried to have to show some cooperation, they refused to come to the meeting, they've already said they refused to have a security guard. Colleagues, I want to move forward the Planning Department's original recommendations, which had conditions in it, one of which was that it closes at 7:00 p.m. at night. I want to go forward with that today. Let's give them six months, see if they can clean the place up, see if they're willing to come to the Watts Gang Task Force on Monday mornings, even though that's voluntary. I don't think we can make somebody do that, and there's no way to really enforce that. But we want to see whether or not the owner and the manager are willing to work with the community on a weekly basis to see if we can help clean up that area. So at this point, colleagues, I would like your support. I know the captain's rank-and-file officers are also in favor of closing this store at 7:00 p.m. at night. I think that's the right thing to do right now. They have shown up until this point complete disregard for working with law enforcement, working with government to clean the place up. It's, listen, we need to bring a quality of life to all neighborhoods in Los Angeles. We need to bring a quality of life, and I cannot tolerate the fact that we were allowing gang members to control a market and to harass people. That is not what the community of Watts deserves. They're willing to work with this owner, but I'm for closing it at 7 o'clock at night and all the other conditions that are in there. And I would include in that the request that the owners, the managers, someone representing them, come to the Watts Gang Task Force Monday mornings at 10:00 a.m. so we can hold them accountable in the next six months to see whether or not we're willing to form a compromise in the future that allows them to open up any later.
Ms. Correia.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I certainly agree with and share all of Ms. Han's concerns about the terrible history that has happened at this location. And it's quite clear that this has been a location that has been very troubled for a very long time, in a community, frankly, that has been very troubled and very, has a difficult circumstance and a long record of crime in the area as well. I don't want to speak for Mr. Reyes, but I do want to just comment a little bit about what happened in Plum. This was probably the largest turnout of public speakers that I've seen on any issue that has come before Plum in the time that I've been a member. And I think there was a real concerted effort by the members of the committee, as well as by the captain, to try to address some of the concerns that were expressed by the community representatives about their lack of other alternatives to buy groceries in the area, the food desert aspects and so on. And there was a real effort, and I'm going to tip my hat to the captain for stepping up and saying, okay, let's give it a try. Let's give it a try and help the community by providing store hours that allow somebody who's coming home from work to still pick up their milk or their eggs or whatever, but at the same time, try to reduce the criminal influence in the area, provide an armed security guard to try to address some of those problems. That was a real effort to try to reach out to meet the needs of the community and still address these crime issues that are happening at the spot. I'm disappointed to hear that the captain is now here saying that even after that, reaching out to the store owner and the property owner, even after that effort to try to help, that cooperation is still not forthcoming with law enforcement and with community leadership. And I think that clearly the effort that was made was not seized upon by the owner, even in the days following that hearing. And that's disappointing to hear. And I think that, given the fact that Mr. Reyes was quite clear, and I think I was quite clear in saying that essential to this would be full cooperation between the store and law enforcement. I'm prepared, I think, to support Ms. Han's motion today and in respect to the efforts that she's made for a fairly long time now, I think, to address this problem and that law enforcement has made to try to address this problem. I think, given the fact that that cooperation has not been forthcoming even after this outreach that the captain has made, that we have to try to take very stern action now. And if six months from now, it's a better situation, then we can revisit some of these issues and perhaps reconsider it. But for now, I think we need to send a stronger message than, because the owner apparently didn't hear it when we were there in Plum.
Thank you.
So I'm prepared to support Ms. Han today.
Thank you, Mr. Correia. That matter is now before us for a vote. I think the message is loud and clear. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Very well. That completes that matter. Next item, please.
That brings us to item number 20. An amending motion, 20A, has been circulated and is now before you.
Arnold Sachs, number 20. I don't see Arnold Sachs in the chambers. Close the public comment on that matter. The matter has been circulated. The amending motion, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
That brings us to item 25, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Sachs. Mr. Sachs is not in the chambers. Close the public comment. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item number 20, excuse me, that brings us to item number 28. Again, an amending motion, 28A, has been circulated and is before you.
Number 28, colleagues. No cards on that matter. Mr. Weisar.
Amendment, right, 28-8. Has that been submitted to the record?
28A.
With amendments. Mr. Weisar, thank you. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item number 33, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh is not in the chambers. Close the public comment. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item number 33, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh is not in the chambers. Close the public comment. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item number 36, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh is not in the chambers. Close the public comment. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please. Forthwith on that matter. Thank you, Mr. Parks.
That brings us to item number 35, for Cards.
35 to the San Fernando Valley. Marion Vogler. Ms. Vogler, San Fernando Valley.
Yeah, hi. I want to speak on 36 for the two minutes, but I'll just take a few seconds on this. Just making sure, folks, that you register to vote. More power to the people, and make sure that we don't have voter fraud too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Matter's before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
That brings us to item number 36, called Special for Councilmember Han.
36. Marion Vogler and Donna Pearman.
Go ahead.
Number 36.
Hello. Good afternoon.
All right.
Yep. This is in honor of my dad and many others who will become Merchant Marines. Hi, Janice, if you can help me, direct me to the benefits. I appreciate that for my dad. He just celebrated his 90th birthday. World War II veteran, you said you're having a hard time finding him, but my dad is one of them. So we had a big party, and it was a lot of fun. And he was describing how he would, that he was hauling these rails, the railroad, to Havana, and that's where he started smoking cigars. And it was very good, you know? Now, he's a happy guy. He's living it up. He's fully retired, and he was just one of the lucky ones. He served in the South Pacific, where he, one day, he saw 800 body bags. I remember all those that had died there. And then he, of course, he served on the destroyer, but, you know, to pick up signals from Japan, but by then, you know, it was already done. The war was done. But he was in the, he was out there working on the rails, bringing in the, bringing in machines. So he's one of those, and I'd like to know if you can help me, Janice, please. Thank you.
You, Donna Pearman, in the San Fernando Valley. Ms. Pearman.
Hi. Oh, yeah. We need also to get rid of the notch law that shouldn't be penalizing people who are born during certain times. I forget exactly what time so that. 1925. 1925. So we need to get rid of that part. Anyway, I see it over here with the Merchant Marines that they were excluded from eligibility under the GI Bill of Rights. I know this GI Bill of Rights because my dad got help, God bless his soul. He, when he's in the Army, and he got the GI Bill of Rights. And why they skipped the Merchant Marines, I don't know why, because they fought just as hard. You have to remember all of the different forms, whether they be Army, whether it be Navy, Merchant Marines, and the Air Force. And so I think that's great that they can get some benefits for the GI Bill of Rights that they never got there in the first place, that would have helped them a whole lot if they could have had help after the war was over. And that's generally where they got it, if they got, like, extra schooling or maybe help to getting a job. And I'm not sure exactly what they're going to get at this late point on World War II. But, and if the people have died and passed on, I think you should be able to give it over to their beneficiaries. So now the fact that they died shouldn't be an exemption, that they should not be able to get these things. So, yeah, do a yes vote on this, and let's do it forthwith. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Lane Victory.
Yes. Colleagues, to this day, I remain shocked that our World War II Merchant Mariners are still fighting for their much-deserved GI rights. During the war, President Franklin Roosevelt had promised Merchant Mariners that they would be entitled to these rights. Unfortunately, he died before that could happen. World War II Merchant Mariners suffered the highest casualty rate of any of the branches of service, while they delivered troops, tanks, food, airplanes, fuel, and other needed supplies. Compared to the large number of men and women serving in World War II, the number of Merchant Mariners was small, but their contribution was invaluable. Yet despite their dedication to this country, Merchant Mariners were denied their rights in the GI Bill of Rights, which Congress enacted in 1945. The service of our Merchant Mariners cannot be forgotten. They deserve full GI benefits, especially now that the average age of our veterans is 85. I've been urging Congress since I've gotten elected in 2001 to pass the belated "thank you to the Merchant Mariners of World War II Act." This bill provides each eligible veteran a monthly benefit of $1,000, which would go to their surviving spouse or children. I've sent letters. We've passed resolutions before, and yet it is still not done. Every year in San Pedro, on May 22nd, which is Merchant Mariners Day, we talk about this. There are few surviving Merchant Mariners that come to that event. We have the USS Lane Victory, which was a Merchant Mariner ship that's docked down in San Pedro. This just makes sense. My Uncle Gordon, actually, was in the Merchant Marines. We've supported this in the past. I just think we ought to do it one more time and go on record to urge Congress to pass HR 23, the belated "thank you to the Merchant Mariners of World War II Act" of 2009. Let's do this one more time. It's time to act. Let's ask Congress to do this.
Thank you, Ms. Han, on that matter. And I have visited the Lane Victory. It's a beautiful ship, and people want to know the sacrifices. It's very well displayed on that ship, Lane Victory. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
You're welcome. And Mr. Clerk, number 35, forthwith, please.
Very good, sir.
That clears the desk.
Mr. President, Council has motions for posting and referral.
Post and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Han requests to arrive at 11:00 on October 5 for city business. That meets Council policy.
That is approved.
Councilmember Corretts requests to leave at 12:30 on October 1 for city business. That meets Council policy.
That is approved.
Councilmember Weisar requests to arrive at 10:30 on October 12 for city business. That meets Council policy.
That is approved.
And Councilmember Parks requests to be excused on October 15 and 19 and to arrive at 11:30 on November 23 for city business. That meets Council policy.
That is approved.
The desk is clear.
And just as a reminder, October 1, 1st Friday in October, will be a council meeting in Van Nuys, City Hall, Van Nuys Chambers. For this coming Friday, council meeting will be in Van Nuys. Mr. Labonge, announcements?
This Friday, it has been announced that an off-duty death, but that of Battalion Chief Gary Clark, will be held at Friday at 10:00 a.m. at Crenshaw Christian Center. Chief Clark's a great battalion chief who leaves his wife and seven children. He worked Battalion 14, which is the East San Fernando Valley, North Hollywood area.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Parks, announcements?
Advise the public that announcement that the Empowerment Congress Southeast Area Neighborhood Development Council will have their monthly meeting at the 8th District Constituent Center, 8475 South Vermont, today at 6:30 to 7:30 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Labonge.
I want to thank the Department of Recreation and Parks for their hot weather bulletin and remind all of you to have your deputies make sure they're up to date on the cooling centers throughout Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley, and also working with Water Power and Restoration of the Overload. Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. That completes announcements. Adjourned motions, colleagues. All please stand in the chambers. Adjourned motions. Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a sad one, but I want to adjourn in memory of Leonardo Jonathan Russo, who passed away at the age of 12 on September 22. He was an avid Dodger fan, excelled at playing baseball. He was a student at Crestwood Elementary and Dotson Middle Schools in San Pedro. Leonardo loved to play outside. He loved camp. He had many friendships. It was a very sad and untimely death. He survived by his mother, Marcia, his father Scott, two brothers, Antonio 14 and Vincenzo 8, maternal grandparents, Daryl and Elaine Hoggin, paternal grandparents, Anthony and Mandy Russo, great-grandmother, Virginia Perez, Uncle Bug Bug, Uncle Dee, Aunt Shauna, Auntie Tiffany, and cousin Giovanni, along with a large extended family. The viewing will be at McNerney's Mortuary Chapel, 2 to 5, on September 28. And the funeral will be 10:30 a.m., September 29, at Mary Star to Sea, with interment to follow at Green Hills. We know this is always particularly hard and sad to lose a child, so our condolences go out to the entire family.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Are there adjourned motions? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of retired Commander George A. Morrison, passed away on Thursday, September 23 in La Jolla. George Morrison, born 1935 in Los Angeles, appointed Department of LAPD in October of 1956, and retired from Central Bureau in January 1995. He survived by his wife Susan and son Sergeant 2 Brian Morrison, currently assigned to Metropolitan Division, son Alex, daughter Nokel, Colleen, Laura, and several grandchildren. His services will be Saturday, October 2, at St. Teresa of Carmel Catholic Church at 4355 Del Mar Trail Road in San Diego. Many of you that's been here for George is probably the number-one person, in addition to Chief Gates, that created the emergency preparedness, all of the mobile fleet, the alternate locations for communications, also the fourth sublevel, all of those things that deal with bringing the city into the 20th century as it relates to the emergency preparedness, fell at George's feet. He longtime commander in charge of... He longtime commander in charge of Metro, and then later, he was an assistant commanding officer at Central Bureau. So we ask for all members, and I think Greg and Dennis Uff's comments.
Go ahead, Greg, and then Ms. Labonge. Sorry, Mr. Smith.
I wanted to cover part of it. I wanted to say about, George was a neighbor of mine for 111 Bernardo Hill. I knew him for many years. But when it came to emergency preparedness, he really was the genesis that helped us move from the old Emergency Operations Center and Board Concept to the Emergency Operations Division, which we now have. He was really the genesis, particularly in police, putting police and fire particularly, really having the vision of what we need to do as a city. And he put us on the road to really being prepared, one of the best-prepared cities in America. And I know in the 1994 earthquake, I'd seen him shortly after that, and I thanked him for what he'd done because I saw it put into place, where we actually responded in a magnificent way. Our police and fire were magnificent in that. It was George's hard work that got us prepared for that. And we were very closely with him. Mr. Burnson worked very closely with him. He went on a couple trips around the world to see what other countries were doing in emergency preparedness and brought back great ideas. And he is really the genesis of where we are today in emergency preparedness. And I just want to thank him publicly for that.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
And I'll follow, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I always recognize Commander, when he was driving down the street, we called him the porcupine car. He had every radio frequency, every communication ability. He could probably touch basically with the satellites in outer space. But he was a cop's cop. He was always there at events when he was assigned as a commander in charge of Metro. Incidents would take place, he'd be there. But he was far ahead of his time when it came to communications. And anything that happened, you go to Commander George Morrison, he'd give you the answer. A real, genuine person who was very committed to the people of Los Angeles. I'll never forget the time, 118 freeway had just opened, and I didn't know that he lived up in that area, but here I see the porcupine going down the 118 freeway. And I said, "There it is." So I pulled alongside of my motorcycle and waved to him. Just a very pleasant man, very dedicated to the people of Los Angeles. And it's a sad loss. I know he suffered illness for a long period of time. Daryl Gates, who passed away, he worked, Daryl Gates, our colleague, Councilmember Parks, worked together in leading this organization, LAPD, in a wonderful manner. So may he rest in peace. A wonderful, wonderful gentleman, a wonderful member of the LAPD. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Labonge.
I knew George Morrison through my role with John Farrell, and as everyone said, he absolutely could like it like Beethoven, could conduct a symphony and write a symphony. George Morrison could do an essay and articulate about the emergency response necessary and what we do, and how the helicopters take off, and not only just go down to Wilmington and check the fields there, they go to Santa Fe Springs. And then from there, and he would go throughout the Silver Lake and Hollywood Dam. And he loved the city of Los Angeles. He loved the LAPD. He loved his job so well. And I'm sorry that he suffered in the end. I'm proud of his son who's on the department. And he truly was a great person who understood the city. I think he understood the roles and what the city charter was about. And as Greg Smith mentioned, he was in the forefront of this development of emergency preparedness. And he helped organize a council meeting, and I don't know if Mr. Alakon was there in his earlier service to the city, but up at Dodger Stadium, which Mr. Burnson was involved. I don't know if you were on the council at the time, where they actually perceived the earthquake would take us out of this building and if the council had to meet, and what the charter meant, on and on. So this is the type of officer, and to think of the generations that he served, from 1956 through Parker's time, all the way through Chief Gates' time and beyond, he truly was a remarkable individual and served under then Chief Parks as well. So God bless George Morrison.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alakon.
I actually did know George fairly well. When, Mr. Parks remembers, when I used to write police exams for the city. Some people like to blame me for Mr. Smith and Mr. Zine, but when I used to write the police exams for the city of Los Angeles, then Commander Morrison would help with crafting. In fact, he did, he worked with me on several different exams. And what some people forget about upper management cops in the city of Los Angeles is they're certainly good police officials, but they are also very academic. And although he was a very, had sort of working-class demeanor about him, he was a very intelligent commander and articulate and very studied in police dynamics and affairs. And I learned a lot from him. And we, obviously, when I was a council member in 1993, and for the time he served, worked with him on specific projects, including the 1994 earthquake. And so he was always professional, always informed, and it was always a pleasure to work with him because you got a straight answer. And even if he disagreed with you, you got a straight answer. And he was a cop's cop, but he was also very intelligent and contributed greatly, I think, to the Los Angeles Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thirty-nine years dedicated to the people of Los Angeles. Well past, you would say, maximum pension time. Thirty-nine years of service to the people of Los Angeles and just a sad loss to Los Angeles.
Thank you. Mr. Smith for the next adjourning motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of a man who actually sat in these council chambers as a member of the city council once upon a time. He was born 89 years ago. His name is Robert M. Wilkinson, better known as Sweet Old Bob. Bob was 89 years old. Graduated from USC in 1947, but in 1953, almost by accident, he was elected to city council. He put his name on the ballot, really didn't campaign, was away on vacation, got a phone call, "You were elected." It really was a surprise. He served from 1953 to 1957 as the 3rd District Councilmember, when the 3rd District represented more than half of the San Fernando Valley. He represented from Laurel Canyon over the 405 freeway, all my district, all of Dennis' district, a good portion of Mr. Carden's district, a proportion of the 2nd and the left. He served a good portion of San Fernando Valley. And was well-known for really laying the foundation for what became the San Fernando Valley, in the infrastructure, all the flood control channels in the 3rd District, all the infrastructure and streets, and streets in my district that were dirt became paved streets. The 118 highway became eventually the 118 freeway. He left in 1957, become the Board Secretary for the Harbor Commission. He served there for 10 years, came back to the city council in 1967 as the councilman of the 12th District, which was moved from downtown LA because the council wanted to get rid of one of the members who was under indictment. So they moved him to the valley so he couldn't be the incumbent, and he won that seat. Bob was a great visionary of what a city should look like when it grew up. In my district, he built the Robert Wilkinson Senior Center. At the time, it was just the senior center that was open in Wreckin' Parks. A year after he left office, we actually opened it. Mr. Burnson decided, in recognition of his years of service, we were naming it after him a Robert M. Wilkinson Senior Center. He was known in these chambers as Sweet Old Bob, because the initials were S-O-B, which he absolutely relished. He liked that concept. As chairman of the Budget Committee, he was well-known to be very tough on city staff. He beat them up frequently because he just wanted a straight answer sometimes. And as we all know, you don't always get a straight answer. But Sweet Old Bob, as he was known affectionately to those that knew him and loved him, was also a very tough fighter for the city. He was also chairman of Public Works while he was here, a great builder of a city. And I remember him well. I have a picture, which I shall remember for many years, of Bob Wilkinson, Hal Burnson and myself, which now comprised of about 60 years of service to the people of that part of the San Fernando Valley. And may he rest in peace. He was quite a character.
Thank you. We'll put all members on that. Mr. Parks?
Mr. Wilkinson and my dad were good friends from the Harbor. And every year, he'd call me with one question, "Are you going to go to Crowley Lake with us to fish?" And my answer was always, "Is it in water?" And he'd say, "Yes," and I'd say, "No." But what we'd always wait for on Crowley Lake was the story after the opening of the season, to find out how many game, the game warden caught, how many of these officials were over the limit in the number of fish. And so that was always the interesting dynamic of their fishing trip.
Story, because it's a great story. Crowley Lake, of course, owned by the city of LA. So Mr. Wilkinson had privileges he took advantage of. But they went on a fishing trip, and one day, there were four of them coming back. They had 600 trout in their trunk and got stopped by a game warden who was notified by somebody. Somebody had too many fish. In the car was a LAPD commander, the councilman, a judge, and a poor, unknown local guy. Guess who got the ticket? The poor, unknown, local guy got a very large fine for 600 fish, when you were allowed to take out at that time about 60, I think.
Thank you, all members on that. May he rest in peace. Mr. Zine.
I just wanted to add that Bob Wilkinson, when I was elected, we'd met a couple times, always gracious, a gentleman. He'd come to a lot of events. And Ms. Hahn, I think he was either elected or appointed or something with the Charter Commission. I remember him seeing at our meetings on the Charter Commission. And even after he left elective office, he was still very committed to the community. And as you saw him age, he was still out there. He was still active. And it's sad to see his lost 89 years of very productive life. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Labonge.
Bob Wilkinson Center, and it was very strong for seniors. He was absolutely very strong for the San Fernando Valley. And I like what you said, Greg, how he was a builder, because it needed a builder. When you talk to him, when you talk about the 1950s in the valley, his district started at Coldwater, I believe, if I recall from his, not Laurel Canyon, Coldwater all the way to city limits. And that was an amazing task. So God bless Bob Wilkinson.
Mr. Zine for our last adjourning motion.
I have one adjourning motion, colleagues. Elena Falcone passed away on September 8th. Born June 18th, 1956, in Los Angeles, resident of Winnetka, a very active member of the Canoga Park Reseda Kiwanis Club, truly extraordinary human being who gave much more than she received and had no problem doing that. Volunteered her time in so many ways, everything from getting other community members involved, participating in charitable projects, benefiting children, elderly and those in need, to helping people save their homes. By trade, she was a real estate assistant. Her passion was spending every moment with her family. Passed away September 8th from complicated health issues, survived by her daughter Michelle, grandchildren Kayla, Sidney, Ricky, and LJ, sisters Rachel, Becky, Evelyn, Roseanne, brothers Ruben, Tony, Stevie, Danny, Johnny and David. May she rest in peace. Elena Falcone.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Make sure we have George Morrison for all members.
Okay, absolutely. We'll do all members on that. And Mr. Weston submitted also adjourning motions in memory of Buddy Collette, which I'm sure Ms. Perry, who'd said some words on that, would like to join, do we already? Okay. And Vernice Barber-Wall as well. So make sure those are part of the records. And we'll add Mr. Weston to Buddy Collette. If you'll please call the roll, Mr. Clerk. This meeting of the LA City Council is hereby adjourned.